I'd like to call it to order, this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, October 6, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and establish a quorum?
Good morning, Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, October 6, at 6:00 PM. I don't think that's right, on October... It'll be repeated this Friday at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUB Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch.
Great, thank you. Do you please rise and join me in the pledge?
Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, good morning to all, and welcome to those that are viewing remotely. In compliance with directives of the County, State, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, this meeting is livestreamed and closed to the public. Temporary procedures are subject to change pursuant to guidelines related to social distancing and minimizing person-to-person contact. Of course, we do welcome verbal comment at today's meeting telephonically. You can do so by dialing 916-875-2500, and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda and/or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call to be placed in queue to make your public comment. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is greatly appreciated. When I open public comment for a specific agenda item or an off-agenda matter, the clerk's staff will begin transferring you into the meeting. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. Thank you again for your patience. We also accept and welcome written comments. You can submit your written comments via email by sending it to boardclerk@saccounty.net, and that's SAC County, S-A-C-C-O-U-N-T-Y. Your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. And with that, Madam Clerk, our first item?
Okay, for your consent matters, items 1 through 36. I do not have any notes for you this morning.
Okay. Start on my left, Supervisor Natoli, any... Do you have to pull anything for separate comment or vote?
Yes, I'd like to have a comment on a couple of items. And one item, if I could, Mr. Chair, would be item 17, where I know we're going to have a report this afternoon from our registrar of voters, and we're authorizing an application for a grant that would provide, I think, some additional... allow us to be reimbursed for some additional services as a result certainly of COVID, but also as it relates to the upcoming election. And I was just wondering, again, I have no problem with the item, but it might be good to have at least some overview as to what we'd be seeking in the grant beyond what's in the staff report and, you know, what the chances of, and there's no cost associated with this, so I don't know if it's unlimited. It's $250 million nationally, so...
Yeah, we do not know what the dollar amount is until we make the application.
Okay, and so if you...
Can we read the item?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Item 17 is to authorize the registrar of voters to execute retroactive approval to apply for a grant from the Center for Tech and Civic Life COVID-19 Response for the United States Local Election Jurisdictions in an Amount Not Yet Determined, with the term ending December 31, 2020.
So, I guess I just maybe like to couple this item with this afternoon, because if there's any additional measures that would assure, you know, voter confidence at election sites and so forth, I just, again, it just seems to me that, you know, we're going to apply for the money, but I saw the item as being complimentary to this afternoon, so maybe we could just tag the item to...
I'll have Courtney discuss it this afternoon.
Okay, and I guess we leave it on for action this morning?
Yeah, if you could approve it, I'll have Courtney also describe it this afternoon.
Okay, that's fine. Then we can leave it on the consent calendar this morning. The other item, Mr. Chair, that I wanted to just ask about was item 34.
Okay. Let me get to that. Item 34 is the approval of the contract for the North Vineyard Station Open Space Preserve Trail and Landscaping Project, Elder Creek Phase 4 and Gerber Creek Phase 1 Plans and Specifications, and allow project advertisement bids to be received on November 12. The environmental documentation is an environmental impact report.
Okay. On this, this is in both districts, one in District 2 and 5, and some of this has the history going back 20-plus years, when it related to drainage plans that were adopted back in 1998 with some of the North Vineyard Station. I'm supportive of the work, but it's been a long time in between the community conversations about the improvements, and since we took an action here recently to require that the board authorize items be sent back to the CPACs, I guess for an update, I'd like to see both the Vineyard Council, and I believe some of this may fall into the South Sacramento Council area, that's up to Supervisor Kennedy if he wanted the portion in his district to go there, but I think it would be wise to have an update, so the community council would know that work that was contemplated with the development that was, in some cases, approved 20-plus years ago, that the work is being coming to completion. I know that with some of the newer residents, at least in the area that I represent, some of the landscaping around some of the detention ponds and trails wasn't yet accepted by the county, was installed without proper irrigation, it died, it caused us complaints, not necessarily in the areas that are being proposed here. So I would like to have an update, and I guess I would ask, for concurrence, that we could send this out to the Vineyard CPAC under the new rules that we are operating under, so that was my point. So I'm prepared to support the item today, but I'd like to have this go to the Vineyard CPAC as it relates to this item. So I would make that a part of the motion unless there's the objections to, along with that we refer to the CPAC for an update on this.
Okay, would please point that out when we take the vote on the consent calendar.
Thank you, that's all ahead, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Supervisor Frost, anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly thank our economic development, Troy Givens and Jeff Cassaway, who have been working in partnership with the Water Forum, and a beautiful mural that's going to be placed at the wall at the entrance of the county, and so it's beautiful, and I'm excited that we're voting on that. I also wanted to just give a shout out to our registrar of voters this year. You know, a lot of times when things get busy, I get reports back from staff that... of complaints and stuff like that, and the report back I got this year regarding registrar of voters is they must be doing a really good job because we're not hearing a whole lot, so I appreciate all their hard work. And then I'm also excited about item number 27, the Hazel Avenue Phase 3, which is going to begin and hopefully be completed by November 22. We're in our neck of the woods, we're very excited to see that coming, so I want to thank Ron Bucary and all those who have been working hard to make that happen. So, that's it.
Thank you. Supervisor Peters?
No.
Supervisor Kenny?
Just to say that Supervisor Frost stole my thunder, and with item number 8, I too wanted to thank Mr. Cassaway and Mr. Givens to not only celebrate what was once a contentious relationship, but now is a very good relationship that we've gained through the Water Forum, but also, I think, as something that, you know, during a pandemic, when so much we do is dark and, you know, this, I think, will add some beauty to our building and to our community, so thank you for the staff's work on making sure that it happened.
Okay. All right, I have nothing for consent, so Supervisor Natoli, do you want to move consent?
Yes, I would move consent calendar with the direction around item 34, that it'd be sent to the Vineyard CPAC.
Okay. It's been moved by Supervisor Natoli in second.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I needed to say on the appointments on item 36, I just wanted to call out, I apologize. On the Lock Management Association, we need to continue that for another month, there are still some insurance issues for the board coverage, so I just want to make sure that that was noted.
Okay.
So we'll continue that portion of the appointments.
Okay.
And the date is November 3, continuation.
Yeah, thanks.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, there's a motion by Supervisor Natoli, and a second by Supervisor Frost, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Great, thank you. All right, next item, please.
We just have a few minutes. Do you want to take your nominations?
Your appointments.
Your appointments. That would be item 47. Okay, so you are continuing to November 17, Area 4 Agency on Aging Advisory Council, Carmichael Recreation and Park District, Rio Linda, Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, and the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. For your matters today, we have the Adult and Aging Commission.
Chief, so recommending continuing this item till November 3?
Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Peters?
Please continue to October 20.
Okay. We have Civil Service Commission.
Please nominate Nick Loyes to District 3 appointee and waive the process.
Okay. Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Peters?
Please continue to November 3.
And Supervisor Natoli?
Likewise.
Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Supervisor Natoli?
Continue to November 3, please.
Okay. Disability Advisory Commission?
Chief, so recommending continuing the item till October 20?
Thank you. Galt Arno Cemetery District?
Continue to November 3, please.
Okay, then we have Lock Management Association?
As was mentioned earlier, we're going to continue this item till November 3.
Okay. Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board?
Chief recommends the nomination of Ryan Spiewogel for the OB-GYN seat, Robert Hickman for the non-specified member seat, and Kristi Heggstrom for the school nurse seat, and then please continue the remainder till November 17.
Thank you. Sacramento County Youth Commission, Supervisor Natoli?
Yes, I would nominate Alicia Z., T.S.E.
And we have the Sacramento Environmental Commission?
Chief recommends continuing the item till October 20?
And Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission?
Chief recommends continuing the item till November 17.
Okay, that concludes your nominations, and I believe we can... In a matter of seconds, we can...
Your opportunity to sing. Show us your talents.
Oh, I don't know if those would be talents. Okay, so item 37 is Report on COVID-19 Response.
Before the doctors get started, let me check for the board clerk. Do we have anyone in any of the telephone queues for any items?
You do for this item.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Give a brief update on our spending, and then Olivia can give more detail, and then we're going to talk briefly about encampment and fire and flames, who you will know about. In the... Looking at the $45 million summary, you guys should have the hard copies of this, the $45 million summary, we increased spending by $2.4 million, 1.9 million of it was with the EMD for business outreach, 432 was for surge capacity, and 104,000 was for lab equipment. So we now have $4 million spent, 20 million encumbered, and 20 million still approved to be spent. On the 23.4 million, we increased spending by 876,000, staffing 430,000, homeless support 250,000, and COVID testing 190,000, so that we've now spent 11.9 million, have 8.1 million encumbered, and 3 million unspent. Give it to Olivia for any comments.
Good morning. So I just wanted to give a brief update on some of the actions that have been taken with the money. So for lab testing, the Public Health Lab is still doing approximately 5,000 specimens per month, but new specimen... New equipment has been installed, and we are scheduled to increase our production or testing of specimens in about three weeks, so figuring around beginning of November is when we're planning to be able to increase the number of tests through the Public Health Lab. Through STEM Express, we are providing services at 10 community sites and to the long-term care facilities. We're doing about 3,000 tests per week, and done about 21,817 so far. We are also, as the schools are scheduled to look at reopening in person, will be providing testing to school staff free of charge through these sites, and additional sites as will be needed. Tests through Cal Expo, this is a drive-through, we're doing about 900 tests per week, and so far we've done 35,560 to date. And for the jail, these tests are done through our Public Health Lab, we've done a total of 4,410, 101 positives, and all but one were at intake. So the process that they have at intake is that the inmate will... is put in an area of isolation for seven days, and they get testing at that time before they are allowed to go into the general public. Tests for the homeless, 1,703 and 92 positives so far, and no outbreaks in either the jail or the homeless population. For the schools, we've reviewed 28 school waivers, and all of them have been processed, and right now we don't have any pending, and as we're looking towards having schools reopen in person for in-person learning, we are looking at being able to assist schools by reviewing their protocols and actually also doing site visits with our team.
Dr. Serry, can I interrupt for a sec? Supervisor Peters has a question.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, you're moving faster, I didn't get to ask my questions about the lab testing.
Okay.
The first one that said you're doing 5,000 approximate specimens a month, and you're getting new equipment, what will this new equipment accomplish? What will it do?
Well, that will increase our capacity for testing, and our proposal was to be able to increase that to 9,000 tests per month.
And so more tests, not necessarily speed?
More... If we... Our capacity is increased, that means that we will be able to provide tests much quicker. Right now, our average is about two days, but especially in certain situations, we have been able to expedite and get the testing within a few hours, so with increased capacity, we'll be able to do that at a greater capacity as well, especially for some of the situations that we get from hospitals or the jail, being able to get the information in a couple of hours is helpful.
Okay, and then on the last bullet there, it says tests for homeless, 1,700 tested, 92 positives, that's about half a percent. Does that inform us in some way about how to treat the homeless situation relative to COVID?
Um, right now with the plans that... The project that we have in place, we feel that this has been successful in preventing an outbreak, and I mentioned the 92, but that's over a period from starting in March, but the success is that we have not had an outbreak in this population. We do testing both for people, new people who are being housed, as well as if we are notified of someone with symptoms, or if there is a death and we don't know what the death was due to, we also work with the coroner to find out the cause of death, as well as do test... Testing if needed.
Okay, it just seems like it's lower than the... Not seems like, it is much lower than the general population.
Yes, it is, and that's a good thing.
Well, of course, of course, yeah. I just... I guess I'd like to see some information on how much money we're spending on that program versus the general population, and see whether any adjustments are necessary.
Um, I think especially, again, as I mentioned, the homeless and the jail, those tests are done through our Public Health Lab, and we have had the capacity to do that, and with the increased capacity, actually, we are also going to be able to provide services to the schools, especially in cases where someone has a... is exhibiting symptoms, or if we're doing testing due to an exposure. So my assessment is that right now, we... The resources that we have are able to manage both what we're doing with the homeless and the jail, as well as being able to provide services to the general population.
If I may, Supervisor, just a reminder that we're providing an overall update at your next meeting on our efforts in the homeless area with respect to COVID, and we can specifically provide the information you just asked for.
Yeah, I just... If we're doing so well here, maybe we can spend some resources somewhere else to make the rest of the population less likely to have it, so thank you.
So the next one is the mobile integrated health units. We have four contracts executed so far, we still have one that's in the works, and from the week of 9/27 to 10/3, there were 1,400 specimens collected across 31 unique facilities, and since September 14, we've done a total of 3,784, so that's only going to go up, because especially now the state requires that the facilities do testing for their employees on a weekly basis.
We have some more questions, excuse me.
Back to the schools.
Sure.
This was kind of low-key introduction here for this particular thing, we get a lot of calls and comments on the schools, so you're saying schools will be able to have in-person learning starting October 13, which is really, what, a week away? One, are they all informed of that, and you're saying it would be a phased-in approach, hybrid model, so could you describe what that is, please?
Sure. So what I mean by phased-in is that in our discussions, especially with SCOWI, most of the schools, what they're planning to do, especially the larger school districts, is that in... Instead of trying to get all of the students back in school at the same time, they're thinking of a phased approach in terms of having, maybe start with elementary, they're still working out the details, so I'm just giving an example of what I think it will look like, that they will start with elementary, then middle school, and high school. As far as hybrid, what I mean by that...
So, right now, the younger children are... It's... They're going to school. Are you saying the high school students will be allowed back in school? Is that what I heard you say?
The high school students will continue with distance learning until they get to the... The school is ready to get to the point of having them come in as in person... With in-person learning.
So, no on the high school students?
When can they come back?
That... Those are the details that the schools are working out, because once we get to October 13, they don't actually have to get approval from us, but they are all working on a plan as to how they want to do it.
And does SCOWI have the final approval on that?
SCOWI provides guidance, but the decisions will be made at the district level, and actually, if I may point out, the superintendent, Dave Gordon, offered that if you'd like, he can come and give... Present with us next time, and give additional information on some of the plans that they have.
That would be welcome.
That... Yeah, sure.
Okay. I'll let him know.
So what is magic about October 13? What happens on October 13?
So the...
To make it the day they can go back to school?
Right now, the waivers are available for the 28 school... 28 waivers have been given for the elementary schools.
Okay.
They are the only ones that are currently operating in the county. On October 13, ostensibly, all schools could open, but they're not going to.
Because the governor said so, or what?
No, 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 because they... The schools are not ready. The parochial and private schools, if I'm not mistaken, will most likely be able to be in action per their comments, but the bigger school districts will probably not be.
And what's special about October 13 is that the state system, that they have set up the tier system, we have to be in the red tier for two weeks before we can...
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
Yes, before the schools are allowed to open.
Yeah, and I should mention, sorry, I know you want to have a question, we are... We are in the red tier as of Tuesday, as of today. We're in the red tier in terms of cases per 100,000 at about 5.8, you know, I said 5.8, which is down from 6.6 last time, and we're at 3.8% or orange for the percent positivity on the tests. So the two metrics, we're at orange and red, but better orange and better red than we were last time, but we're still red overall.
Sounds like we're talking about a sunset. Supervisor Natoli?
And just on the schools first, so next week, on the 13th, I assume, is it the 13th or the 14th, that they would be available, that they would be able to assume?
13th.
Okay, so on the 13th, the schools that then... It sounds like in the public school realm that they're not ready to return yet, but in the private parochial schools, assuming they can meet the criteria, they could actually have K through 12?
That's correct, yes.
So the high school, middle school can return to the cohorts, as long as they have spacing and all the other things?
That's correct, yes.
And does that... Doesn't require a waiver, so those schools can, as long as they meet the criteria, is there any percentage, like with the churches and so forth, can they only have 25 or 50% that could have full attendance as long as they can meet the spacing requirements?
For schools, no. The guidance from the state is only that they need to pay attention to the social distancing and face covering, and so we have a school team that's actually going to be working with the schools, and will be able to do site visits as well to assist them in seeing how they can meet these criteria.
Okay, but they could, you know, assuming they can meet the criteria, they could have 100% attendance?
They will have to make the... Decide how they're going to be able to do that.
Right.
And as I've mentioned, for especially the larger schools, most of them, their plan is to do a hybrid where some students, depending on how they set it up, might come in the morning, others in the afternoon, or on alternate days.
Okay, but there won't... But they will be able to, as of the 13th, assuming we stay in the red tier, and it sounds like the trends are continuing to move in the right direction, to return their students, do they need to get an inspection first or a visit first? And so if so, they need to make arrangements on the 11th or the 12th, they can go forward on the 13th?
Though the inspection is not a requirement, our teams are just there to assist, so they do not need to wait for the inspection in order to start.
So those schools can send notice out if they choose to, to their middle school and their high schoolers, that they can begin to hybrid, however they structure their program, but they can begin attending school?
That's correct, yes.
As it relates to, because I know, you know, we get all kinds of inquiries, and you get any number of them referred to you, and thank you for your assistance and, you know, and timely responses as best anyone can be expected to get them turned around, but I... We got an inquiry regarding the ball fields, you know, and not necessarily for the organized sports, but just for folks practicing and so forth. Are... If they return to school and/or for after-school activities, can they, with, again, with proper criteria, or are they still prohibited under the current tier from actually going outdoors, even though the weather, you know, may begin to change here, and actually engaging in athletic activities?
Actually, going outdoors is a good thing, but no contact sports, and we are still expecting guidance from the state. I know that they're working on it, but I guess they have levels of approval as well, so... But a lot of the counties have been asking about the ability to go beyond just the conditioning, and also for some of the additional activities, and I know Supervisor Frost has asked me that several times, so as soon as I get the guidance from the state, I will definitely make sure that you're aware of it, as well as putting that information out to the schools.
So the guidance right now is no, is out... Is it no, just you can do your individual workouts and fitness?
Individual workouts, yes.
But you can... So whether it was organized or unorganized, if people want to do, play a pickup game or go out and practice, they still, under the current health order and the way the state has laid this out, under the tier that we're in, that's not permitted, is that right?
And actually, it's not according to tier. None of the counties are able to actually permit games right now.
So does this board need to help in the communication with the state relative to at least getting some guidance, you know, we're still, you know, we're going into the fall season, obviously it'll turn to winter here, and I think people would like to get out, assuming they can do it safely. out, assuming they can do it safely. So, again, recognizing that they're scrambling too, but, you know, we're not the only county, and it sounds like throughout the state, I'm sure others are getting the, you know, same level of inquiry, if not more. Is there anything we can do to help, I guess, Dr. Casari, relative to, or Dr. Bealison, to try to at least get some additional guidance so that we can, you know, begone to say is...
I mean, it has been a frustration of ours, and that's been sort of one of the major areas that has not been addressed. So, I don't think there's any problem with you sending it as a board if you wish to request that.
Okay. Well, again, I, again, Mr. Chair, I think that'd be good if we could, you know, as people return to school, we see some enormously, again, you know, recognize, I think folks are certainly taking seriously the mask. And distancing guidance and requirements, it would, you know, I think if we could at least get some idea...
Football, basketball, and soccer would probably not be allowed.
I, I get that, but maybe, but there may be some other activities that would be allowed, you know, non-contact sports, but even practices or, you know, people go out there afterwards, it's not in any organized fashion. And, okay. I just want, one other question, it was on the, before we went back to schools, it was on the mobile integrated units. So, we have four contracts, but didn't we have more units in place before that? Before...
Actually, I, we have four contracts, but we have more than four units because some of the contracts, they have, they are providing two units. And so, when we get the fifth one in place, we'll, we will have at least six or seven available, six or seven units.
And those moved, and they moved throughout the county?
Correct.
And they're with the fire districts and with other agencies, or who?
They're with four fire districts and one private ambulance unit.
Alpha one.
Alpha one, yes.
And, and, and how are they, who makes the determination about deployment?
So, they actually divvied up the county into areas. So, each of the contracts or each of the fire units will, will be responsible for a certain area. And they actually created a website so that if any of the administrators from the congregate settings need to set up an appointment, they just go to this website and they can enter the information into a calendar. And there's also contact information on that website. So, if they have additional questions, or if they need to change something, they can contact the person who's responsible for that area. Also, in addition to that, if, for example, there's a, a large request that comes in and that unit is not able to, to meet that need, they, they are able to get assistance from the others to, to, to help and make sure that they do it in a timely fashion. And the leads actually meet on a weekly basis to discuss what's going on, discuss any issues that have come up.
Two things that occurred to me briefly, just, one is the schools return. I don't know if there's going to be any additional ramping up for testing, you know, as a part of, of that. Obviously, you talked about contact tracing in a moment. And the second is I appreciated the map that showed the zip codes. And I noted on the map that we got late last week that it showed a couple of zip codes in the Delta area. And I know that you've, in previous comments, both of you talked about, you know, some of the farmworker population and some of the, as well as others in some of the more rural areas of the county. So, who is it that, what team is providing a service down there? And how, again, you know, I don't, I can tell you wifi and web access is pretty sketchy in some of those areas, but the schools are focal points and, and we, as are the libraries. And I, my question is, what team is assigned to help us in the Delta?
So, we do have a, a site, a testing site that is staffed by STEM Express, but we are continuing to assess as schools are reopening and looking at the additional need to see if we need to set up an additional site there. We...
Where is that, where is that at, Dr. Casari? In which community in the Delta?
Yeah, I'll have to get the site.
Okay, because I didn't see, I saw the zip code information that you had.
Oh, it's in Gold. But, okay, yes, it's in the Gold area, but we're also planning to set up one in the Delta.
Yeah, either Walnut Grove or Isleton, or, you know, or, or, somewhere in the, in the River Delta. I mean, Gold's not that far away, but it's a distinct community, so. Okay, that's all I have right now. Thanks.
Supervisor Frost?
I just wanted to first thank you for the hard work in putting together the COVID by zip code report for us. It was very informing, informative. And I wanted you to know that we are also advocating at the state level through our assemblyman and senator to see if the state can provide that information. I also wanted to ask about the private school, private schools seven through twelve, do they need to submit an application for a waiver before they can open? Or do they just move forward, assuming they're good to go? Good, everyone's good to go? They, no waivers? They don't have to call you?
No waivers.
Okay.
Once, once we hit that, that date.
Okay, and I wanted to ask, is baseball a contact sport?
Baseball's not a contact sport, but it's not in the guidelines either.
Not in the guidelines?
It is not in, so they can't play baseball?
No, they gotta just condition them.
But that's one of the questions that we have out to the state, and hopefully when they put out their guidance, they will provide that.
Okay, and I have a roller rink, and I, I don't know if I have an ice skating rink, but I'll just throw it in in case I do. There, I know you're aware, and you've probably already seen their proposal.
Yeah.
And I wanted to know if there's any way we can get them back open?
It's in tier three, so we have to get there first.
Yeah, to orange.
Is that orange?
Yeah. Also, the Indian group, we just need a letter from them to get it approved. The Indian group that you talked about yesterday?
Oh, the event?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I think it counts as a...
A letter on how they're going to open?
I think it counts as a cultural entity, but yes, they should be able to. But we, if we get a letter from you first, that'd be helpful.
Okay, yeah, that was, they were, they are very excited that they can open even if it's in a small way. So, thank you for that. Right now, I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, with the contact tracing, now we have a combined total of a hundred people that are either trained or in training. And now, we're actually able, especially also because our numbers have, daily numbers have gone down to about a hundred a day, we're actually able to reach every single one of those that are reported to us and make sure that they're able to isolate. And we're also launching an app. And actually, this was an introduction, again, from Supervisor Frost, some, one of the companies that contacted her. And this app will also help with this, assist with communication and education for people that are reported to us.
Qualtrics?
Yes, Qualtrics.
Can I, can I ask a question about the contact tracing?
Sure.
Are we at a point where you feel we have enough enlisted folks to do contact tracing that there would not be a waitlist, given our status at this point? In other words, if, if you, if someone tests positive, I assume, once that person tests positive, somehow that information is made available to a contact tracer so that they can go look back to see who that person came in contact with? I assume there's no waitlist right now? That as soon as that happens, that we can deploy that right away?
That's correct, yes.
But is there, is there a point past which, given the number of contact tracers we have deployed, that that would, you know, that wouldn't be the case? That we'd actually, there'd be some time between the time someone reports being positive and the time that someone goes out?
Right now, with the number that we have and the number of cases we're getting, we are able actually to, to meet the need. And in addition, especially the ones that are from the CBOs, they're also providing additional services. And last week, they were able to provide services to about three hundred and twenty-three families in terms of providing food. And in fact, some of the comments we're getting back is, there was one family, they were completely, almost running out of food, and then they got the contact. And so, that helped them to continue their quarantine. And also, the, these contact tracers are able to check on a day, daily basis to make sure that the persons that are in quarantine or isolation are actually doing okay.
That's the beauty of going to orange and being in the red. Right now, I'm moving towards orange, is that we're, before, we were not able to see everybody when we had two hundred, three hundred cases a day. Now, we are. That's why it's so important to get to orange. Thank you.
So, with the CBOs, with the contracts that we have, with Sierra Health Foundation and La Familia, Sierra Health Foundation, as we mentioned, is able to subcontract with other CBOs, including SAC covered, Soul Collective, Urban League, Roberts Family Development Center, Asian Resource Center, the MONG. And between them, they have at least six languages that they're able to offer translation for. And so, as I mentioned, the ones that are from the CBOs are actually trained both to do contact tracing as well as being able to provide the, the wraparound services and, and the education. So, they're able to help with, with those services for the families that have to be in quarantine.
Then, just wanted to report briefly on the encampment and on Fire to Flames. For some of you, I'm not sure if all of you know about this, but Fire to Flames comes from Supervisor Nataoli.
Yeah, Flames is a fire ministry, yeah.
It's Fire and Flames Ministry, sorry. They have, they have been meeting daily with two hundred or so more people congregating without masks, et cetera. There've been a lot of complaints from Rancho Cordova city council folks and other folks. And we've been able to put out a cease and desist order, or we've, we've contacted them before. But unless the sheriff, this is just for your information, unless the sheriff enforces it, there's nothing we can do. So, I just wanted to let you know that, because we've been getting a lot of complaints.
I didn't under, I have great difficulty hearing you today.
I'm sorry.
What's Fire to Flames?
Flames, Fire and Flames Ministry is a group that has been having these nightly, what are they called?
Religious gatherings.
Yeah.
And when they approached the, the city initially, they, they had indicated that they would abide by the guidelines, which is not more than a hundred, and that there would be social distancing, and they would use face coverings. But we have received multiple complaints from the neighbors, and I believe that some of you have received those complaints as well, that the noise was, that it was very loud, and that also that they were definitely not abiding by the, the guidelines that, that they had been provided. So, and that's the difficulty that we have had because with enforcement, we do work with environmental management and code enforcement. But right now, when we get the complaints, we're able to provide the education. But the enforcement piece has been a challenge because as public health, we can give the order, we can tell them, okay, if you don't do this, you know, there are, there could be consequences. But we don't really have a clear path as to what those consequences are for situations like this one with multiple complaints and, and not, not being able to move forward.
Supervisor Toley?
Yeah, I appreciate Dr. Bealison, Dr. Casari's, you know, background on this. And I know some of you may have received similar complaints, but I heard from a couple of the council members from City Rancho Cordova. And I know that the city manager's office was in contact with my chief of staff. And because it was in the city of Rancho Cordova, obviously, any permits for the activity that be required under any local land use would follow under the city. But they planned, I guess, a, like a seven, a seven-day series of events. I don't know that it ran the full seven days. But I, and I didn't realize you'd actually, had you issued a cease and desist? Did you actually issue that? I know Friday, you were still meeting on it late.
We did send them two letters. We contemplated sending the cease and desist, and we actually worked with county council. But at that time, the difficulty was that if we sent it, we would have to know that we need to move with an action if they ignored our cease and desist. And that's where we're having some difficulty.
And I think, you know, again, I know this is frustrating for folks from, you know, all, you know, all across the spectrum. And, and yet, if you get some, you know, active, I guess, ignoring of the, you know, the current health order and whatever it may have been agreed to or not with, in this case, the city, but it could happen in a corporate area or in other cities as well. And, you know, realizing that now, I guess, there's really no, we have toothless enforcement because, you know, and whether it was, you know, under the, the auspices of the sheriff in the incorporated area or in one of the cities, and obviously in Rancho Cordova, that's under contract with the sheriff and the city police force. And so, there really is no effective enforcement. So, if people choose to ignore us at their own risk, and even with numerous complaints, and I won't say there were excessive number of complaints, but there were certainly, you know...
That's been happening, that's been happening in a wide variety of business sectors, from fitness studios. So, some of the people who are playing by the rules are actually losing their jobs or losing their business, and others are able to go ahead and, and open up. And we're aware of that, although we do go out with three, three-one-one calls, et cetera.
So, I guess, you know, that, that presents a bit of, you know, I hope we get to orange by Halloween, but, you know, even then, you're still going to have another tier, there's still going to be, activity is going to be either prohibited or limited. And, and even if we didn't have a local health order, there'd still be limitations under state. So, I mean, it takes us into a, I think, a discussion, maybe, you know, a little more detailed than we might be prepared to have today, but...
EMD is, EMD is able to, through their restaurant inspections, are able to actually shut down, like through, with the state, they can shut down restaurants. But there are a lot of businesses that can't be shut down.
But, you know, the, the playing field will become more unequal, I believe, as this is prolonged. And again, I, you know, we're all hopeful that it'd be over tomorrow, but I don't, that's not going to happen. And so, with that in mind, it may be, Mr. Chair, I just to say that we want to have some discussion about, again, not to be heavy-handed, but if, if the playing field is unlevel and people are losing their businesses, who are adhering to the rules, whether, you know, they may disagree as strongly as those that are staying open, but, you know, believe that, you know, you know, the regulations or the law is the law. And in this case, obviously, there, I'm sure, any number of other, you know, you know, religious organizations and churches that would like to open up for, you know, their activities that support their ministries and so forth. But they're adhering to it. And then you have others who, you know, choose to do what they're going to do. And then, obviously, you don't even, you know, utilize, you know, the, the bare minimum, which is, you know, social distancing or a mask. And again, I, you know, I wasn't in attendance out there, so I don't know what exactly took place. But assuming that that's the case, even in, in, in some limited fashion, I just, it, it makes it difficult for us to get to, you know, to the next tier because we do have an outbreak and/or a cluster that occurs, which we know we had early on in this, associated, at least with one of the congregations, very early in the, in the pandemic. I, I don't know, it just, it just presents, I think, a real challenge for this county. Because again, you know, it's, it's an honor system, and if folks are not playing by the rules, then it puts, you know, puts the entirety of what we're doing at risk. Because if we end up going back to purple, for example, then we got to tell other businesses, you know, had a chance to reopen and, you know, either fully or in part, guess what? We're back over here, and now you got to, you know, potentially shut down again. I, I just think we need to have a conversation about, you know, the enforceability. Education is great, and I think asking people to do the right thing, most people will. But if they don't, then what do we do?
The good news, if I could, Supervisor, is that we've actually, we've now gone, if you're looking at me, we were, we bent the curve down dramatically. We let loose and let a decent number of businesses open kind of fully, which was, we think, in our hospitalizations, seventy percent in our hospitalizations. Yeah, sorry, this is not working. Seventy percent in our hospitalizations.
Jesus.
And we're down in our cases dramatically. So, we've been making a difference, and the vast majority of people are playing by the rules. But there is this issue. And let me close with the encampments, because I know you wanted to hear about that. The encampments in general, the, the number of them and the area of them are going to be taken care of by Bruce's committee that he's been working on. But we worked on the health order for how it affects the encampments. We made three changes that the city wanted and the county people wanted. Number one is things like sidewalks and immediate public safety issues, that, that people have to be backed off from that. Second, they have to, life essentials, rather than trash, that people will be limited to life essentials, which are things like a bicycle, a bed, you know, a cooking area, et cetera. And third, we, we took out a should from a, should, may apply or will apply. So, anyway, we think we may... from a, should may apply or will apply. So, anyway, we think we made a difference in terms of how the, how the encampments are operating now. The bigger issue of how many encampments and how we get people into housing, et cetera, is being dealt with in a separate and separate group, which Bruce is heading up. But I just want to let you know that we actually made it, we had the meeting yesterday, yesterday, yeah. And we came up, come up with those. And so, that'll be in the public health order on next Tuesday. Just so you know, the next Tuesday, we're doing the health order with the schools added in, and we'll be changing the health order to encompass that. Supervisor Peters?
First, thank you for those suggested changes to the public health order. I think that will make a big difference for residents everywhere. But back to the churches. Did you, I know we have at least one that's not wanting to follow the rules, but did you get the video from Arcade Church along with their request, any chance?
No, I didn't.
They sent something to me, and I can't tell whether they sent it to you. So, okay, I'll forward it to you. They filmed, they videoed all the steps they go through as people come into church, and they have to have a reservation, and they got a barcode and all of that. So, I'll forward that to you. But I know their request and others are, at what point will they be allowed to, right now, it's 25% or 100 maximum?
50% at orange, and either 75%.
Is it still capped at 100?
No, it's 200.
200.
I can't hear you.
200 for orange. It's 25% or 100, whichever is less, for red. And if we make it to orange, then it's 200, it's 50% or 200 or less.
Okay. Well, for these large churches that have, you know, 1,500 seats, at what point, and you probably don't know, but at what point will they be able to congregate?
Yellow, right.
Yellow.
Yeah, at yellow. At yellow.
At yellow.
Which is, to be honest, can be hard for us to get to. It gets us down to seven cases a day, one per 100,000. So, it's 15 cases a day. But we may, I mean, we were down at eight to 10 a day when we were back several months ago. So, it's making a difference. I should say that I know that you guys get lots of comments about large groups, like churches, people who want to play sports or whatever. But it's still true that the gatherings are a real generator of clusters of cases. So, we really, I know it's tempting to ask, and it's fine, you can ask, but we were trying to hold the line on, on large gatherings. I hear you on the 1,500.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense, a sense of it. I'll forward you the information they sent me. I thought it was very helpful. It might be helpful to other churches, the process they've gone through. Boy. And then, I was listening to Supervisor Nativi talk about that one particular church in you that, and, you know, you want to have a process, but you've got to be really careful there. I mean, if you, because free speech is free speech for everyone, you know, including protesters on the street, gatherings in churches, and restaurants, and homes, and all that. So, I think you have to be super careful about how you apply.
We are. We've been working with the county council, because there are, from freedom of religion, there are limits to it. And it's public health and public safety. And so, it's a tight walk, a tight rope that we're walking, but.
It is. Probably a legal type.
Well, if I could, I just, I agree with you in that if that's the message, that, you know, this is the honor system, we give guidance, but, you know, in the end, we're not going to be able to do anything about it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I can interject there. There have been, as you probably know, several cases throughout California during this pandemic, challenging the county and the state's ability to regulate churches and other, other cultural gatherings. So far, the state has been successful in defending those allegations in the initial stages. Obviously, those are still working their way through the court. Sacramento County has not yet taken the approach of suing or seeking temporary injunctions against these types of businesses or.
You get a temporary injunction, and then what?
Right. I mean, then they have to, they have to shut down, and then it goes through the court process.
How are you going to shut them down?
Well.
Yeah.
You need enforcement.
That's the thing.
So, I mean, there are legal, there are legal ways to do it. As Dr. Bealson said, it is a legal tightrope. Our office is working directly with public health to figure out other solutions at this point. But in the, in the end, it may come down to legal action if the board and the county decide that that's the route we want to take.
Well, I know some of the large churches in my area are doing multiple meetings on Sundays, one at eight, one at 10, one at 12, and that helps break it up a little bit. A different question for you, a different subject, is we're reading about second wave virus in various places around the United States. And I'm curious as to your opinion, or maybe you have actual facts, about what is causing it? Is it the lightening up of the requirements, or is the virus morphing into something else?
No, I think it's.
And speak loudly, if you could.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is hard to do. And Olivia, chime in if you, if you want to. The issue in Sacramento is, as we continue to go down, and I think that's because, this is an educated guess, that because we have most, we can be outdoors virtually all the time, that there's much more outdoor activity in Sacramento than there is back east, for example, where it's gotten cold already. It's in the 50s and 60s. And they're having, New York and Boston are having increased number of cases, because their people are going indoors. I don't think it's a morphing of the virus, and I don't think it's anything more fancy than that, that they are indoors, we are not as much indoors.
Okay. I think about the, particularly the restaurants that everyone is so, I mean, we're worried about all these small businesses, but restaurants have to order food and things like that so far in advance. I wonder if they're actually going to take advantage of the 25% or even 50% requirements when it comes. It'll be interesting to see as people go back indoors.
Yes. And just to add on to that, I do agree that part of the reason we're seeing a rise in some of the other states is partly because of a loosening up of some of the restrictions. That's why it's so important to make sure that as we loosen up, people realize we are still in the pandemic, and that we still need to do the few things that we can, which is the face covering and the social distancing.
Yeah. Thank you.
Supervisor Frost?
I just think too, I'm getting some calls regarding the restaurants also. There are some restaurants who, who actually did open up and ordered supplies, and then they ended up having to shut back down. And now, they're afraid to open back up. And I'm getting, now, there's concern regarding that. And I guess there's no way for us to guarantee the future. So, that is on my mind also. The question, I think you might have covered this, and I don't know if I heard it, Dr. Bealson, you, I think you said we're already in the orange?
We're orange for test positivity. For one of the two metrics, we're in orange, and the other one, we're in red. So, we classify as red.
We're red.
Oh, yeah. But there's two measures, we have to be in the orange. We're already in one of the measures since, and we have to be in that for two weeks before we can go to orange. And which, can you just describe what you anticipate as far as a timeline, like when we got in the orange, and when will it be two weeks?
So, we've been in the orange, well, you've got to be in double orange for two weeks.
And we're not in the double orange yet. Are you going to let us know when we're in the double orange, so that we can get on our knees every night and pray?
We will report on it regularly. And in answer Supervisor Peters' request, we put on the color that we are on our website.
Oh, good.
So, it's up, it's now red. But again, we've been.
But you don't put orange on there until you're in there for two weeks.
Correct.
Okay.
But we'll definitely provide that information for you.
If you think of it, I mean, it'd be kind of good to.
We get it every Tuesday, so we can, we can just.
We might make it by the 31st.
Yeah, we're hopeful.
And I love your campaign. I think it's cute.
We've handed out thousands and thousands, like tens of thousands of posters and, and things. So, hopefully, people will follow through. Supervisor Nativi?
Yes, thanks, Chair. Just quickly, on last time you were here, you mentioned that on the color chart, there's no green.
Yeah.
So, that means that for the foreseeable future, whether we have a local public health order or not, that there's not going to be any restoration to kind of the normal, well, been normal pre-pandemic, I guess, activities. And there's not contemplated in anybody's.
Most of the, there's a lot of yellow that is 100% opening. Yellow is less than, less than one, and less than 1% of the testing, I think, or less than 2%. And it's less than one per 100,000, which is 15 cases per day. And if we get to yellow, actually, it, a lot of them are 100%, if not 75%.
75% in some cases.
But a lot of them are 100%.
Yeah. But going back to your question, I think that, and that's a part of our message, is to remind people that we're going to be in this altered situation for quite a while. I think most people are contemplating at least two years, even after the vaccine is introduced. It's not going to be like a switch on and off, because there'll be time, a period of time over which we will be providing that vaccine to the population. So, I think, and that you probably heard that also from the CDC, where they were saying that masks are still our best protection. So, just reminding folks about that.
So, to, you know, piggyback off your analogy of the on and off switch, so, but if we got to yellow, but then if you keep in place the tracking and tracing and testing, and then you exceed the numbers, is it immediate backwards, or do you have this two weeks to correct?
Weeks.
You have two weeks to get that back under some?
Yes.
But if that's, if that's the procedures we operate under for the next two years, I mean, that's, you know, that puts us always, I guess, you know, there's the health risk, but then there's this risk of falling back.
Our thought is that with time, especially once we're able to get to the point of vaccinating, that it will be easier for us to maintain the low numbers. But right now, it is a huge lift in terms of, you know, the impact that it has on businesses and on individuals.
Okay. One other question I had, I know you've been working on it, but what's the status? It's been now four or five weeks since we asked about the Wi-Fi in the parks, and we've been working cooperatively. I guess there were some, looking at some technical aspects of it. It didn't sound like the funding was necessarily any barrier, because it wasn't tremendously expensive, if I understood it correctly. But we had, I think, two, maybe other park, or more park districts that were willing to, to work with us again for.
Yes. So, we've been working with the parks districts and also DTEC, because they're the ones who can do the technical part. I'm hoping that we will have some additional information in terms of costs and feasibility by the end of this week. So, they have been helping. And at that point, we'll present it, and then you can make a decision.
Okay. So, you're, do I understand what you just said, it has to come back to us for approval? It's not something that's already authorized? I mean, there's $44 million has been authorized.
True.
Yeah.
I think Supervisor, the thing to do is get the cost estimate, see where we are. Schools are opening next week, starting to open next week. We need that information to really assess next steps.
Okay. Well, the park districts were just as another place for folks, you know, if they're going to study, you know. And again, I know we had Cordova Recreation Park District, maybe South Gate was, had forward. But anyway, we had some interest, wasn't all dependent upon schools.
True. There is interest, because also with some of the after-school programs, the report that we've gotten is that sometimes the volunteers are the ones that use their cell phones in order to provide some Wi-Fi access. So, I think there is a need there. I think we just need to be able to see the feasibility, and then we'll, we'll report back to you.
Okay. And so, DTEC is under David? We're moving along on that part of it? Okay. All right. Thanks.
I have a question about, well, it's a question that's been asked a number of times about these chambers, and when we can expect to have some minimal occupation during our board hearings, and for other activities that take place in the space, especially given the fact that, my understanding is that movie theaters can now be open with very, you know, with limited occupancy and all the protocols in place. And I have to believe that if you can have a movie theater open and welcoming patrons for that activity, why, why the heck couldn't we, you know, get our act together and have the ability to open these chambers to the public?
I have a comment on that before you respond, in that we have to take a look, I think, at all of the city councils in the county, because everybody's might have, I mean, all these jurisdictions may have a different feeling about it. And if one starts and the others don't, you get some disparity there. And in a movie theater, everyone's sitting still and not talking generally. So, I just wanted.
I'd like to hear it from the doctors, please.
Well, that's why I wanted to get my comment in before they made their comment. Mr. Chair.
Can I, can I hear from you, please?
What you've said is correct. Initially, when, when we asked, the information we were given was that it's a possibility. But then, I got a written statement from the state that was contradictory. So, I'm trying to sort that out before I talk with Florence and get a timeline. So, that's the reason why we haven't come back to you with that, is that there's some conflicting information. And probably, as Supervisor Peters has mentioned, there is some interest from some of the other city council chambers. So, making sure that we're able to get the information to all of them at the same time, I think will be important.
Is the state looking at this from the standpoint of giving specific guidance to all local government in terms of their, their public meetings?
Yes.
Okay. And so, what, what's the expected determination on that?
I've submitted another request, and we'll follow up again, and plan to get an update to you by the end of this week.
So, for those of our constituents that are continuing to express their interest in being in chambers, to participate in these public hearings, what is the best response right now? We're waiting, we're waiting on the state?
Yes. I want to make sure that we have a definitive response. And part of it also is because we're Sacramento, we're right here. I think, I want to make sure that I'm on the same page with the state, so that we're not in that situation where we're trying to backtrack. So.
Well, it's certainly been expressed, again, by a few of us up here, that that's, that's of paramount importance to.
Yes.
Make sure that that particular activity is, certainly, we want it to be safe, and we want to make sure the rules are consistent. But to continue to not have direct public in-person participation is a real problem, in my estimation. And it would be great if we can at least begin to slowly open up and do it responsibly.
Supervisor, you could add that to your other issue and send that request.
What's that?
You could add that to your other issue if you wished.
To send a letter to the state.
Yes, we could. Supervisor Frost?
I don't want to put you on the spot, but I would like to ask if you could report back to us on, or maybe you know the answer. Is there a difference, is there any difference between our public health requirements and limitations versus the state's? And if so, what is it in terms of we're more strict or we're more lenient? Can you give us a, any, the information on that?
Yeah. Right now, we're basically the same as the state. We've given some guidance, like for restaurants, having just families eat in the indoor restaurants, and outdoor being open to others. But so, we have some more guidance, but basically, we're following the state.
On everything else?
Yeah, because the state has the color codes, and they kind of govern everything.
We have put out guidance for Halloween celebrations. I think the state has not put those out yet. But we are keeping in line with the general guidance that, that is provided. But we thought it was important, because one thing is we're getting a lot of questions from people asking, should we even plan? Is, can we do it safely? And if so, how can we do it safely? So, and with that, we work with environmental management and review all the guidelines. And if there are any questions that we have, we can also request clarification from the state. But as much as possible, we try to keep within what the state is providing, because again, the state is the one that sets up the tier system. I know some counties have chosen to, like when they got to the red tier, they chose to not open up. But we discussed it, and we felt that now, people have been waiting so long, and now that they have the approval and permission to do it, that we wanted to work with them and make it possible, rather than. wanted to work with them and make it possible, rather than waiting any longer.
Right, so in other words, some of the, some of the Bay Area counties that were in the red decided not to open the restaurants. We decided to open the restaurants up to 25% for economic reasons, as well as public health reasons, that we thought we could handle it.
And some counties have discontinued their public health order
Yeah.
and deferred to the state, basically.
Actually, they, they set down their emergency order, but we would not recommend doing that.
And, and the, the state order is still in effect. So, even in those counties that don't have an order, and I think there are very few, they still have to abide by the state order. And the state, in some circumstances, has come in, for example, if there are certain restaurants that are not compliant, they have come in and actually taken action.
Does the state have authority over the licensed restaurant licensing?
Yeah, through ABC.
Yeah.
Oh, through ABC, right. Okay, good. Thank you.
Supervisor Tully?
Yeah, I just wanted to express thanks. I know others already said this morning, but certainly thank you, Dr. B. and Dr. K., and all your respective staff for all the efforts. And I want to thank Bruce as well, and the team. I know you had the meeting yesterday, you referenced it, looking at some of the issues that relates certainly to, you know, segments of the population, but also how we can, you know, I think, effectively carry out, you know, the health orders, but also deal with some of the issues that we're dealing with, as relates to, not just encampments, but I just think generally, we talked about enforcement, and, you know, this is, it requires a lot of folks on the team to, you know, work cooperatively and collaboratively. And again, there's a lot of public input, and certainly as there should be on something of this magnitude. But appreciate your efforts. I want to say thank you, and I know Dr.
Thank you.
Especially to the public health staff and Dr. K., they've been doing a huge amount of work.
Yes, yes.
And we do thank you all for your support.
Yep.
Is there, on that note, is there something that, because we're receiving these updates, and I think they're very helpful, obviously, you're getting a lot of questions each time you, you come in and, and speak to the board every other week, almost. Is there anything, well, let me put it to you this way. If there's something you think we could do as a board to help with, you know, saying thanks appropriately to those that are, you know, doing all the heavy lifting, we, we try to do that regularly here, but we want to make sure that it's, it's getting through to the, the line, the line staff, the public health nurses, everyone that's, you know, out there wearing a gown, and, you know, has a swab in their hand, or whatever they might be doing. I think it's incumbent upon us to really make sure that message is getting received. And so if there's anything that you think we ought to be doing, or the, or the chair's office, or the CEO's office, please let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we, we do have some?
You do have public comments. You have about 10.
Okay. Thank you.
You ready for your? Hi caller, please start with your comments.
Hi, good morning. Yes, I'm, my name is Rochelle Cole. I'm calling from San Joaquin County, and I'm calling to request to end this, the health emergency order, and remove this ma, these mask mandates. They are not proven on science. We need to open counties up. We need to let businesses work. We personally own a, we are self-employed and have our own small business, and we have been dramatically affected by these orders. We have our elders who are dying in rest homes that can't see their family. And it's so heartbreaking, and I don't know how anyone can sit by and justify these orders that you guys are forcing on us. There's several ADA violations taking place, discrimination across the state. I personally cannot wear a mask due to physical and mental constraints. And I am discriminated against left and right. I can't shop. I can only shop at like three stores without being sent out. My children get pointed at, we get yelled at, harassed, because of these orders that don't, that aren't withstanding with any science. So, I'm asking today that you guys please take in, take into account of the damage that, that these health orders are doing to the people of California. We're not helping people. You are killing them. People are killing themselves, because they don't know what to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments.
Yes, my, my name is Juliana Emery. I am in the Supervisors District 1 in Sacramento, and I would like to request that the county terminate the local health emergency regarding COVID-19. I would love to see our businesses open. I would love to see our churches open, our schools open, and the ability to congregate publicly with everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments.
Hi, my name is, can I speak? Am I being heard?
Yes, you are.
Okay, so...
Can you turn the meeting off in the background, though, while you're talking, please?
Thank you very much. Please, we're to be attending this, because I've been in the Capitol 100 in person. The fact that you are not, this experiment only adds to the list of your crimes. To end the emergency instantly, the county is open. South Dakota was never closed. This, this DC is calling this an outbreak. You need to defund testing trace. You need to limit care applications to symptomatic cases. Stick alone. Will not be mad. They fought tested. They will not be trained. They fought be trained. I can assure you, by the, I am seeing a community that are flipping something. You want to see in the street, this county must die. You, for the peace, you'll forget it for one. All elected, we will get all of you to the appointed doctors. Don't get one showing us that they're, and because, yes, this is happening, and you are responsible, and you will answer to us. Not put up with anymore. You are nearly children of, you need to let elders out. Vaccine mandate, there was no more. People are done with, can believe me that, by calling you, letting you know what is happening, the community among the people behind your desk, it's close meeting with your mask. I assure you, the people, they will not, enough more days. It's open, let me, Dakota never, I am a mother of, in a dump, husband is a public school. People are done. Say, the angst might be less than his, because six months, what this is, a virus, a 99%, eight is not a pandemic, it is an outbreak. And to talk another 45 minutes, I can just keep going, because these decisions are unwantative, and the people of you will be held personally for saying. You sit in that meeting, and you think about the shooting forces, thank you. The sheriffs understand the Constitution, and they, but this is a, and all of this is unmitigated, no activity. That Dr. Beelson, he needs to go. He needs to go, because that man...
Can you give us your final comment, please?
A pandemic is not more important than, a pandemic is not more important than...
Can I have your final comment, please?
Need to be ashamed for, you will bump you out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments.
Yes.
Go ahead and start with your comments, please.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Gabrielle Ingram. I'm a constituent in District 2. I appreciate the time some of you took in speaking with me, and I look forward to speaking to the rest. As for my comment, the goal was to flatten the curve, and that has been done. Now, we have a tiered system with no green tier for reopening 100%. Instead, the governor has stated we're moving from a pandemic to a twinemic as we head into flu season. Proof that the state has no end plans. More businesses will fold, more children struggling with distance learning, more elders dying alone in their care home prisons, and no end to the unconstitutional stranglehold of the people. Allowing the governor to dictate public health issues is irresponsible, unscientific, and not legal. Any question on who's running the show is evidenced by the equity system that was just announced. He is no longer even hiding that he's using emergency powers for political purposes. Kevin Keighley has a great breakdown that went out this morning. There is little to no science behind this system. The National Center for Health Statistics emphasized that most deaths are not by COVID but with COVID. The state has combined the data, setting the rates by COVID artificially high. Only 6% of those deaths had no comorbidity on their death certificate. Then there's all the data on the high false positive rate of the PCR test, where the pushback Kaiser is getting right now from reporting a patient test is positive every day they came in for a retest so they could go back to work. Testing is full of problems, and the data coming from there further inflates the county positivity rate. There is zero evidence or data showing that we are in a quote "state of emergency." The burden of proof lies on those stating as such. If they cannot, or will not, they are guilty of peddling fear to a population that has been terrorized by media, government, and health officials. Anyone supporting them by not countering their claims is liable for unlawful orders. This is beyond your reelection and what CARES or FEMA money will be left on the table. We, I insist you take action, and rather than deflecting the public health with everything I've pointed out, follow the Plaster County White Papers we emailed. They're a blueprint to terminate the local health emergencies. Help us push back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments.
Thank you. Fine day today. My name is Patrick Banker. I live in the 4th District. I should say how happy I am to be speaking with y'all. I think that everyone on the Board of Supervisors is good enough, just the way God made them. And I think that's true for everyone in our town. I think that's also true for everyone in our country, up to the president. I believe that true reality lies in our unity with each other, and a sense of reverence for us being connected to each other. I had a, I had a conversation with a Coast Guard soldier, and I was able to sing him a song about my small-town values, and how, you know, we can all relate to, you know, things like that, things like being connected to each other. I want to say that I was on the bus the other day, and I saw a dad get on the bus, with his two children, there was a little boy and a little girl. They're about four and five years old. And I thought they were being abused, so I said, Heavenly Father, I hope these children know how much you love them, and I pray that they know that they are precious to you, Heavenly Father, and they're safe and protected. And I just felt like they'd been given a little too much medication. And I think some of this medication may have biotechnology or things like that, that can transmit messages to people. And I think that's very, I think that we all know what it feels like to want to protect those who are innocent and vulnerable. I've been hurt myself, and I think that it's important to ask, how can we reconnect with each other? What is your purpose, I would ask, for the people who might be doing this, the children, or to people, like innocent people in our town? I would say, when, when do you feel like yourself the most? And I would say, how do you deal with negative emotions? And how do you nurture yourself? I'm very sorry, but I'm not sorry, because the children or anyone else deserves it. And I'll admit that I feel like I'm failing, because I wish that I could just make a difference in one young person's life. I think we should really reconsider some of these medications, because before we know what's all in them. I think that it's really about the danger of having children being controlled like robots, or computers, by computers, or people, you know, with computers controlling them. And I have compassion for my fellow man who has hurt me. I shall not shake their hands or say "au revoir." But should they say one day that what is happening is a tragedy, perhaps we will shake hands one day. I believe you're all perfect, the way God made you. We send every one of you. Wish you well.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments.
Yes, my comment is, I am one of the people in the community, and I am outraged at the fact that we are still closed down. There is no reason for this to keep going on. The statistics have shown, time and time again. Trying to keep my composure is a very big detail in this moment, because you have many, many angry parents, business owners. You have allowed this go on far too long. You, along with our governor, are destroying the state of California. And it's really angering to people to have to send their poor children to school with masks on, when masks have clearly done nothing to stop the spread of the coronavirus that is literally less dangerous than the flu. I could sit here and tell you statistic after statistic, but you already know this. You have a bigger plan. We in your community are not stupid. You are harming your constituents. We know this, and we know who you are. And you threaten our daily lives. You keep us locked down for no reason. Now, you are threatening to test our children in school. You are threatening to contact, trace us. You want to take away our freedom? You already have. And we are law-abiding citizens who work hard to keep the state going, to keep you in your jobs. We look up to you for your help, and your assistance, and your guidance, and you are not doing any of that. You are treating us like we are the bad guys, because we don't want to wear masks, because we know the truth. Our president just got over COVID with flying colors, but yet you want to keep elderly people locked in their retirement homes. That is the real problem here. You want to keep people separated. You know that this is doing something to our whole community. You're damning us. You're keeping us away from each other. What is your real plan? Because we know this is not about COVID. If you really cared about this city and your people in it, you would do the right thing. This is not the right thing. You know this is the wrong thing. We know this is the wrong thing. And while we still have our rights and our Constitution, we will fight you tooth and nail. We will never stop, because this is unconstitutional. Everybody knows it. You might have some people fooled and scared to death to stand up to you, but I and a larger some are not. We are not afraid of you. We are afraid of the fact that you have us believing this. And that's all I have to say to you.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please start with your comments.
I'm sorry?
Please start with your comments.
Okay, I can, am I, am I, it's about the pandemic?
Yes.
Okay, so am I live now?
Yes, you are, dear. Please start. Go ahead and start with your comments.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you so much. My name is Amelina, and I would like to really ask you, the, the Board of Supervisors, to end this local emergency. You know, there is no emergency, and you know that. And you know that it's your responsibility to end this emergency. You know, the, the Pino Code, Section 101080, it says in there that you are required, you know, the, the health... the health officer are required to terminate this. And the Board of Supervisor, you know, if this emergency prolonged more than seven days, the Board of Supervisor are to review every three days. We have seven months over into this. There is no emergency. Please, you need to end this. And, um, I would like also to say about mask enforcing. There is no evidence, no, no science evidence that the mask works. So how, and how the doctor there was encouraging mask enforcing. There's no law. There's no law. What are the, what are the police officers are going to tell people? I'm arresting you because you're not wearing a mask. And they're not breaking any law, except that there is a guidance from the Health Department. And Dr. Olivia, she said there that the CDC said that the masks are, is the best protection. I thought he was washing your hands was the best protection, not masks. There is no evidence. So I would like really for you to take, put the hand in your heart and see what this is doing to the people. And, and there's no local emergency and you need to end that. And also I would like to say that promoting usage of masks is contradicting with OSHA. You know, OSHA said that, you know, if the oxygen drops from 19.5, you're putting the health of the person at risk. And here you are doing this propaganda about mask wearing when there is no emergency. There is no pandemic. And I would like to really take this seriously and end this local emergency. There is none of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Caller, please start with your comments.
Thank you. Good morning for taking my call. Um, my comment is there is no threat of an epidemic that overwhelms the resources of this state and therefore, according to the Emergency Services Act, Section 8558B, there are no grounds for a state of emergency in California. Furthermore, there are no stipulated phases for reopening. The reopening is constitutional as well as the mandates and therefore we should reopen without any restrictions. The virus COVID-19 has a 99% survival rate for the majority of people. I'm a very concerned citizen as this forced lockdown is affecting us all tremendously. The virus that has 99% survival rate is killing more businesses than people. This virus that has 99% survival rate is causing mental illness, depression, and anxiety to those that were never suffering from these before. We do not need further contact tracing. What for? We have never done anything like this to the extent for the flu or the common cold. This is absolute government overreach for a virus that has 99% survival rate. But I'm pleading that you guys do not further lock us down. We do not need it. It's unnecessary. We need to reopen. We need to not put further restrictions on the citizens as we're suffering as it is. So please hear our plea and please don't further lock us down or give us any more restrictions. We need to reopen. We need it as a people, as a state because we're killing our state by constantly keeping us oppressed. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Caller, please start with your comments.
Stacy Meyer in District One. Sacramento County is not in a state of emergency and never has been regarding COVID-19. Even your own health director has stated numerous times recently that Sacramento is stable. Stable is not an emergency. Rather than being concerned about funding and your own reelection, your bigger concern should be obeying the law. You are currently breaking several state and federal laws by continuing the charade of an emergency. And to be crystal clear, since there really is no state of emergency, you are not immune from being charged with these crimes. I'm going to educate you on some of the laws that you soon may be charged with since it seems clear that your legal counsel has failed to do so. Federal laws include Title 18, U.S. Code 1038, falseness, misleading information relating to biological hazards and conducting hoaxes. This hoax in this case is there is no emergency. This is enforced by the FBI and Department of Homeland Security and the penalty is life in prison. This could be one of the criminal charges against you. No one is above the law. Title 18, Code 1040, fraud in connection with major disaster or emergency benefits. You are declaring and continuing the state of emergency to get funding. This is a crime and the penalty is 30 years in prison. California state laws include Health and Safety Code 101080. You are required by law to proclaim the termination of the local emergency at the earliest possible date. We are eight months in. There is no emergency. If you have the people in your district that are living in fear, that is on you, the state, and the media for continuing to fear monger. This is terrorism. There are more laws, but I think you get the idea. If you participate in disaster fraud, which is what this is, your bonds can be seized, which means you will lose your positions as county supervisors and you can be prosecuted criminally. I strongly encourage you to start obeying the law. You have an opportunity to course correct and do the right thing by proclaiming an end to the local state of emergency immediately. The state has no legal authority to harass businesses and take away their liquor license due to not following the guidelines. Guidelines are not laws. What the state is doing is tyranny, plain and simple. Your actions or nonactions have hurt so many people and killed so, so many businesses. It is time to be Sacramento County first. Focusing on your reelection or how much money will be left on the table from CARES or FEMA grants will not only continue to hurt more of your community thus shrinking the incoming funds from taxpayers now and beyond, but force our hand on legal action. It won't matter if you are reelected should you be in prison. I insist that you make things right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller, please start with your comments.
Uh, yes. Hello, my name is Chris Wolfgram. I'm from the Rosemont area of Sacramento and I would just like to ask that we end this lockdown immediately. Um, I know that the coronavirus is real. However, I believe that it is never going to go completely away. I believe it is something we are just going to have to live with, just like we do with the common flu. If a person is at a higher health risk, it should be up to them to take additional precautions, uh, such as social distancing and masks. But this should not be forced upon everybody. I also believe that the lockdown has literally cost lives and certainly people's well-being, livelihoods, and freedoms. Again, I just think we need to end this lockdown immediately and cause enough damage as it is. And that's pretty much my feelings on the whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is your last comment. Hi caller, please start with your comments and if you could turn the meeting off in the background before you start talking.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Thank you. And you can go ahead and start.
Oh, hello. I'm calling from the Citrus Heights area and I'm just calling to let you know that as the Board of Supervisors, as our representative officials, uh, due to the COVID-19 response decisions, you are in violation of fundamental human and constitutional rights and you all will be held liable and accountable for reparations. So you need to do the right thing per being our elected and appointed officials. And you need to end the local health, uh, emergency, just like Placer County has done. And you need to work with local health officials and agencies to bring an immediate end to the local public health emergency. Because even the CDC has said there is no pandemic. This is considered an outbreak. There is no pandemic. Something with a 99% recovery rate is not a pandemic. And you need to defund testing and tracing and you need to limit the CARES and grant money allocation simply for symptomatic cases. So you need to fund healthy communities and you need to make, uh, our elders and disabled directly in-person, uh, comfort and access and allow them to be let out of these horrible lockdown conditions. Our children need to be allowed to return to school. Children do not die from this virus. They do not have any problems. And the masking is simply, uh, just more of the catastrophic nonsense for which you will be held liable. Because after all, as I indicated earlier, you are in violation of fundamental human and constitutional rights and you will be held accountable. And, um, children, uh, need to have their IEP services and you need to stop violating ADA and mask mandates are completely unacceptable. They are also violations of, of, of human rights. And, um, we are not going to be, uh, forced vaccinated. We're not going to allow our children to be forced vaccinated. And we do not support COVID-19 vaccine mandates. And in terms of this Beelson and his nonsense, talking about how our religious and constitutional and First Amendment rights play second fiddle to a, um, a virus that, um, is considered an outbreak, well, that is just nonsense. And that Dr. Beelson will also be held responsible and accountable. Because how dare he think he has the authority to say that the Constitution, that has been, uh, you know, the law of the land for over 200 years in this nation plays second to Dr. Beelson and his silliness. And really, that's the bottom line. This is silliness. And all of you sitting up there, you're just playing a game. We know it's theater. We're done with it. There's no way you're going to be able to get the sheriff to enforce any of this. You are destroying small businesses. You're destroying communities. You're going to, uh, see, you know, a major uptick in.
Can I get your final comment, please?
School and just like LA County has, we're going to have all of you kicked out.
Can I get your final comment, please?
You are responsible to us. You work for us.
Thank you.
And we will vote every last one of you out.
That concludes your public comments.
Thank you. All right. Um, thanks again to Doctors Beelson and Kessari for the, uh, the update. We look forward to the next one. All right.
Okay, item 38 is County Service Area Number One, Zone Number One, Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charges for the Foothill Farms Shopping Center. And I do want to let you know that Alma Munoz is our Assistant Clerk and she's going to take over now.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Dorothy Codani with the County Engineering Division and this is actually the first of two agenda, um, items we have on the agenda today. For this particular item, the parcel under discussion is commercial property located on the northwest corner of Auburn Boulevard and Garfield Avenue. There is a tentative parcel map which will divide the parcel into three individual parcels. In response to a condition of approval, a request was submitted to initiate the Benefit Category Change process for CSA1, which provides street and safety light services. Therefore, a notice and ballot were mailed to the property owner on August 21st. The parcel currently pays an annual service charge of $246.90. The proposed change would increase the service charge to $824.48. And therefore, if there are no questions from your board, we recommend that the board take the first three actions, um, that are recommended, which are to open the public hearing, consider all written oral testimony, objections and protests, close the public hearing, and direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
I don't have any.
If not, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
You have no verbal public comments.
Close the public hearing. And I guess now direct the Assistant Clerk to tabulate the results.
The legal owner for this item, Foothill Farms Sacramento LLC. The site address is 5445 Auburn Boulevard, Sacramento, California, 95841. And, um, they have marked yes.
Thank you. Since we have no majority protest, we ask that the board adopt the attached resolution. And I can read into the record the fill-ins for the resolution. So, starting with Section 2, at the close of the hearing, the board received zero written protests, which the board finds and determines to not constitute a majority protest. Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category and 0% was in opposition.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, entertain a motion.
Uh, that will be my district, so I will. I haven't heard anything from anyone different, so I would move the, uh, staff recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved by Supervisor Frost and by Supervisor Kenny. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item?
Next item, number 39, is the County Service Area One, Zone One, Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charges for Arco Sacramento.
Thank you. Uh, good morning again, Dorothy Codani with the County Engineering Division. And for this particular item, the parcel under discussion is a proposed service station at the southwest corner of Elkhorn Boulevard and 32nd Street. And again, in response to a use condition permit, uh, I'm sorry, a use permit condition of approval, a request was submitted to initiate the Benefit Category Change process for CSA1, which again provides street and safety light services. A notice and ballot were mailed to the property owner on August 21st. This parcel is currently in the safety light only category and pays an annual service charge of $2.56. The proposed change would, um, result in an annual service charge of $453.90. Again, if there are no questions from your board, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider testimony and protests, close the public hearing, and direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for staff? If not, go ahead and open the public hearing.
You have no verbal comments.
Close the public hearing. Uh, any further comment by board members? If not, the chair will move the item. Uh, do you need to?
I need to open the backlist. Thank you.
Okay, I got a little ahead of myself there.
And we see the protest ballot and it is, the legal owner is 5339 San Juan Holdings LLC and the site address is Elkhorn Boulevard, North Highlands, California, 95660. And they mark yes.
Thank you. Again, with no majority protest, we request that the board adopt the attached resolution. And I will read into the record again the fill-ins for the resolution. Starting Section 2, at the close of the hearing, the board had received zero written protests, which the board finds and determines do not constitute a majority protest. Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of the benefit category and 0% was in opposition.
Okay, great. Uh, again, I moved the item. Supervisor Frost, I think, got in there first as a second. Uh, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Okay, and for your next item, I need to, um, bring in, uh, Member Betty Williams. And I'll read the item after I get her on the call. Member Williams?
Yes, hi.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Let me read the item into the record. Item 40 is your approved minutes from, uh, you're acting as a Sacramento County Tobacco Securitization Corporation. Approved minutes from a prior meeting, adopt fiscal year 2020/21 budget, receive and file the fiscal year 2019/20 audited financial report, and adopt a resolution setting additional regular meetings.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, good morning, Board of Directors. Colin Bettis, County Debt Officer. There are four action items before you today as the Director of the Sacramento County Tobacco Securitization Corporation. The approval of the minutes, the adoption of the budget, and receive and file of the audited financial report and setting additional meetings. audited financial report and setting additional meetings. The items before you are laid out, and if you have any questions, I am here for any question, to respond to any questions you may have. The budget, one thing to note in the budget, this year we did increase the budget for some contingency items for $30,000, because we do intend to look at a refunding opportunity, and this will allow us to do that with some professional services contracts that may be non-contingent.
Very good, thank you. Member Williams, do you have any questions of staff?
I do not. I already asked my question separately to Colin, and they were answered beyond my satisfaction.
Very good, thank you. Any questions from board members?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Supervisor Frost, second by Supervisor Kennedy. We'll do a roll call vote.
Thank you. Member Kennedy?
Hi.
Member Peters?
Hi.
Member Serna?
Hi.
Frost?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
And the motion passes.
Great, thank you.
By unanimous vote. Item number 41 is to introduce an ordinance amending various sections within Chapter 2.115 related to election campaign contribution limits and deleting Articles 5 and 6 related to public finance of elections. Waive full reading and continue the ordinance to October 20th, 2020 for adoption.
Good morning, members of the board. Florence Evans with the Clerk of the Board's Office. Here today are Sheriff Scott Jones, District Attorney Anne Marie Schubert, and Assessor Christina Nguyen. The campaign ordinance was before you on September 1, and it was continued to today's meeting because the board requested staff provide additional information regarding off-election year contributions, and to clarify whether contribution limits apply to an election cycle or an election year, and confirm if existing campaign funds from a prior election must be returned once this proposed ordinance becomes effective. You also asked staff to provide a list of contribution limits for other countywide elective offices and a copy of the Assembly Bill 571. I'd also like to add to the record that revised copies of the staff report were distributed clarifying that the proposed 12,500 contribution limit is from a person or organization during off-election years. Also, you received a revised attachment for, which was the countywide elective offices matrix, and there was a correction to Santa Clara's information. It was in the wrong column, and so now it's in the corrected column reflected under an election cycle. So it was not for off-election years. Today's recommendation is to introduce an ordinance with amendments to and deletions of sections within Chapter 2.115 in relation to campaign contributions and the limits set within the ordinance. Currently, Chapter 2.115 only has provisions for the county elective offices of the Board of Supervisors. The Assessor, DA, and Sheriff are requesting to establish contribution limits for their countywide elective offices. Currently, their offices do not have contribution limits for election campaigns. It is recommended that the board set a $25,000 contribution limit from a person or organization during a primary, general, special, or runoff election, and a 12,500 limit from a person or organization during any single off-election year for the countywide elective offices of the Assessor, DA, and Sheriff. It is also recommended that you delete Articles 5 and 6 to the Campaign Reform Fund. It's related to the Campaign Reform Fund. This fund is regarding the use of public funds to finance an election campaign. Other amendments throughout the chapter are a result of the proposed amendments, and it requires adding new sections, reorganizing and renumbering sections, and deleting obsolete sections as necessary. Attached also is a copy of the Assembly Bill 571. This bill was passed in 2019 amending the government code stating that an elective county or city office cannot accept contributions from an individual greater than $3,000 per election. AB 571 does not prohibit a county or city from establishing its own contribution limits above or less than $3,000 from an individual per election, nor does it replace existing contribution limits set forth by county or city ordinance or resolution. AB 571 also states that if a county or city establishes its own limits, then existing campaign funds can be transferred to another campaign committee. This is referenced on Page 2 in the third paragraph of your staff report. AB 571 is effective January 1, 2021, and the limits will apply to counties and cities that do not have contribution limits set by an ordinance or a resolution. Attached is the matrix showing contribution limits of countywide elective offices with a population of 1 million or greater. Based on the request to establish contribution limits for the countywide elective offices, the proposed ordinance includes changes in the following articles and sections. And so I'm going to cover those sections. In Article 1, under General Provisions, there was a revision under the findings. The countywide elective offices of the Assessor, DA, and Sheriff are large in scope by population, and in order to run a meaningful campaign, it is recommended that the board set a higher limit than the board's limit. This allows for an effective and transparent campaign and deters political influence over office holders. Currently, the countywide elective offices do not have contribution limits. In reference to the population, the matrix in your package shows contribution limits of those countywide elective offices with 1 million population or greater. And I just want to make a couple of notes about that. Seven out of 10 have contribution limits for countywide elective offices, and right now Riverside and San Bernardino do not, and what's before you today is to consider adding them for Sacramento. Alameda County is a 1.6 million population, and their limit right now is at $40,000. Fresno County has a 1 million population, and they're at $30,000. And I'd like to note that they adopted their ordinance in August of 2020, so it's pretty recent. For Articles 2, under the definitions, some of the definitions were updated to reference countywide elective offices, and a new section was added defining a countywide elective office, and the sections were renumbered. In Article 3, for the contribution limits, the new sections were added for the countywide elective offices proposing a 12,500 contribution limit from a person or organization during any single off-election year, and a $25,000 contribution limit from a person or organization during any primary, general, special, or runoff election. Other amendments resulted in cleanup from renumbering, reformatting, and referencing countywide versus county elective offices. Some of the language was also deleted in reference to the Campaign Reform Fund, which I'm going to cover in Articles 5 and 6. In Article 4, for the expenditure limits, this section was deleted because it's related to the public financing. The Campaign Reform was put in place to set a limit on expenditures if funds were intended to be used to finance an election from the Reform Fund. And I'm going to cover that a little bit more when we get to Articles 5 and 6, which is next. 5 and 6 is the Campaign Reform Fund and Budget. The Campaign Reform Fund is considered use of public funding to finance a campaign. The Reform Fund was established in the 80s to address campaign reform issues that were happening at that time. It is recommended that the board delete this section because the county does not fund the Reform Fund and does not fund campaign elections. There is litigation in California as recent as 2019 that does not permit spending of public money on political campaigns. There are details referenced on Pages 2 and 3 of your staff report for more information about that. There is also a footnote on Page 3 of the staff report related to the Court of Appeal that denied a petition by Sacramento County to not allow the Fair Political Practices Commission to enforce prohibiting a public officer to expend or a candidate from accepting public monies for purpose of seeking an elective office. Therefore, your county does not budget for this fund at this time. I also confirm with the City of Sacramento, they do not use their Reform Fund as well. In conclusion, it is recommended that the board introduce this ordinance amending various sections in Chapter 2.115 of the County Code related to contribution limits and deleting Articles 5 and 6 related to public finance of elections, and then to continue this ordinance to October 20th for adoption. If you do approve the recommendations and adopt the ordinance on October 20th, the ordinance would be effective 30 days from that date. The recommendations were reviewed by the county executive, county council, sheriff, district attorney, and assessor. The sheriff, district attorney, and assessor do support the recommendations and can answer questions if needed. And Lisa, Travis, and I are also available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Natoli?
Yeah, thank you Flo for your follow-up. I know there's a lot of information included here. I wanted to be clear, as I tried to track through the chart and the numbers here, that so with what's being proposed is that with the off-cycle, a limit of 12,500 per either individual organization. So if I take the three years that are off-election cycle, that allows to accumulate 37,500. Then the provision would also be that you would be able to accept in the election year for the primary and general election cycle, $25,000 in each of those periods?
Correct.
So it could be $50,000 aggregate during the election cycle? 25 for the primary election period, and then another 25, or is it 25 aggregate for the entire election period?
Lisa, it's my understanding it's for the entire election period. Am I correct?
Well, if you read the ordinance as it relates to what was carried over from what the current ordinance is, it talks about primary and general. It also talks about a $40,000 aggregate, which this provides for. So I guess I'm going to be clear about.
It would be 25 for the total election period.
25, so if they got.
For the cycle, not just the.
For the cycle.
Yeah. For the cycle. Okay, so.
So it's not 25 per each primary, general, special, runoff? It's 25 total.
Okay, so it's 25 total, because.
But the first part of your statement was correct about the 12,500.
37,5.
Correct.
And so what would be provided for then over the four-year period is that you could raise $63,500 from any single individual or organization? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Because it wasn't clear to me, because I thought the limitations on Board of Supervisors in the current ordinance had provisions for both caps, but also provisions for both the primary and general election cycle. I'm just looking at page. Okay, so if you look at the limitations, if I take you to Page 5, 2.115.300, no person shall make to any candidate for county elective office, and no such candidate for, so except from any person's contribution of 250 in any single off-election year, or 1,250 in any of the following periods: primary election period, general election period, special election period, special runoff election period. And my understanding was that the ordinance provided for, under current structure, what was amended, that in a primary election period, you could raise 12,500, and then that clock starts again for the general election period. And if that's the case, now you're saying that's not the case.
Actually, I'm going to have to correct myself, because looking at it again, the 12,500 says any single off-election year, so that would be the three years.
Right.
And then you're correct, it does say 25,000 per election period.
Right. So that's 50,000.
Correct.
Plus 37,500, so it's $87,500 from any single individual organization over a four-year period.
And if you have a special election or runoff election, you can add those too.
Right, there was a special election, but that would probably be two election cycles, but I mean, two election periods.
It tracks the same structure as currently for the Board of Supervisors, that limits are increased.
Well, yeah, significantly.
Yes.
But because the way it was being reflected, I believe, to the way the question was answered, and I think you did sincerely, but was that it was only $25,000 for the entirety of the election cycle, but it's not. It's election period, it's broken down.
And I stand corrected.
No, I know, but that's a significant amount of money, and as I look at what you've charted out, and that's my point, and I don't know how much thought's been given to this, but I mean, that exceeds anything for any county that's our size or larger, significantly more. $40,000, I think, was the largest number, and that was in Alameda. Fresno just adopted theirs. It doesn't talk about off-election, or, and again, I don't know if their ordinance is broken down, but it's basically $87,500 over a four-year period that you could raise from any single individual or organization. So I put that out there for.
And the ordinance obviously could be amended to address that.
I know, it could be, but I just want, I had that question going in, and you've answered it now, and so I'll leave that on the table for now. So, thanks.
Other questions for Flo? All right, thanks Flo. Yeah, so we're going to go ahead.
I can also get the answer for Fresno and. Actually, I have the answer. Oh, great. Based on Flo's chart for Fresno, it says per election period, or I mean, per election. So it's 30,000 per election, according to her chart. I can look at the actual language, but I would assume that means 30,000.
Election, which would be not election period, it says election cycle, Lisa's chart, so.
Yeah, so while you are talking, I'll definitely look at this actual language of the ordinance and answer that question. And you had the same, I think, for Alameda?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and give the countywide elected officials an opportunity to address the board. We'll start with our DA.
Good morning, Chairman Serna and members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity. I know a lot of work has gone into this. I want to thank County Council, as well as Ms. Evans, the tremendous amount of work. I'm here to say that I support the ordinance. I actually respect the question from Supervisor Natoli, and I do think it's worth drilling down into those other comparative ordinances to make sure that it is not just a complete election cycle, a four-year time, or versus, you know, individual, primary, general, those kinds of things. I may sound like I'm a little bit on my soapbox, but I do want to emphasize why I support this initiative or this ordinance. I am proud to be your District Attorney. I became a DA in 1990 for no other reason than to promote public safety, stand up for victims, and to make our communities safer. I never in my wildest dreams believed that someday I would go up to complete strangers and ask them for $10,000 even though they don't know me, and tell them that I'm going to do a really good job for them. It's not a comfortable position. Everyone on this board knows that. We don't like asking for money. We didn't become elected officials. I have the Assessor and the Sheriff here. I would assume they're going to say the same thing. We didn't go into this profession to go ask for money. I came back to Sacramento in 1996 because I grew up here and I love this community, and I want people to feel safe in their community and their homes. But the reality that we all have come to learn is that it is an expensive proposition, more so and more so every year we go forward, of how much it costs to run an effective campaign. I ran my first election in 2014, when Jan Scully announced after 20 years that she was going to let her seat become open. I was proud to be supported by her. I was naive as to the amount of work it took. I ran my, I think my countdown calendar was something about 539 days of running for seat. You all know how hard it is. But I also recognize, and with tremendous respect for Jan, that people were saying things about me, which I'm like, well, that's not true. Well, that's not true either. That's not true either. And I realized fairly quickly that I needed to tell people who I am. My platform at the time, which I'd like to believe I have implemented, is public safety is about not just prosecution, but prevention and innovation, and trying to keep people out of our systems. But to tell people that is costly. And we are a county of 1.5 million, an incredibly and wonderfully diverse community, but running that campaign is expensive, because we all know, we sit in a major media market. It costs hundreds of thousands of dollars to run a countywide campaign, to tell the voters who you are. And the first election cycle when I ran, granted, there's no limits. I never in my wildest dreams believed that I would have to raise $673,000 to tell people who Anne Marie Schubert is and what do I believe in. My expenditures were more than I raised, 700 and something thousand, and I had to go raise money to pay off that debt. And then, you know, I'm proud to have been elected, and I then implemented things as what I said we were going to do. And I'd like to believe people respect what we've done. And then in 2018, then the next election comes up, and then I had to raise $939,000. That's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. And then you get accused, and I get it, you get accused that you're, you know, on this person's payroll or that person's payroll. Well, the reality is, I'm going to run for DA, and I'm going to win, and I'm going to raise money, and I'm going to tell people who I am and who our office is, and I am proud of that. But when we live in a community of $1.5 million in the major media market, and you have to do all these things to tell that story, and yes, I am a 100% fan of the democratic process, and if you all want to throw me out of office, then do so, but I'm going to tell people who I am, and that costs money. And so I support this ordinance because I think it's reasonable. I mean, if we'd had 25,000 back then, yeah, it's reasonable limits. It's not going to stop independent expansion. It's not going to stop independent expenditures, we shouldn't be naive to think that, but it does put limits on the candidates themselves in terms of the political forum, the ability to run effective campaigns. And to Supervisor Natoli, I understand your concern about 87,500 per person for four years, but I will also say this, that, you know, I was very fortunate in the first election cycle, I didn't have to go to the general. I won it in the primary. Actually, I won it in the primary the second time too, but, but, you know, if I, if I or whoever else runs and there's then a runoff, then you got to raise money again. And so it is costly, and so I do think those are questions worth answering before we go forward, but I would just say this, is that I think we all have a desire that at least the appearance of an undue influence is limited. Do I believe I'm not going to be fair because I have money from certain groups or certain groups? No. I have every belief, and I know that I am fair in whatever it is. But I also respect the desire of the community and the board and everybody to kind of put these limits on it, so I think this is fair, particularly given the size of our county, the cost of running campaigns, the cost of major media markets. And with that, I just would be willing to answer questions if you have any. Thank you for that.
Any questions for DA Schubert?
Wow, that's pretty good. I'll take that. Thank you.
Ms. Wayne?
Hi, Christina.
Hi. Good afternoon, I think it's afternoon. Nope, still morning, 15 minutes. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I just want to say I support common sense limits. I was frankly surprised when I ran that there were no limits. Other assessors are shocked that we have no limits, and I think it's time we come up with the times here and put some common sense limits, and it's very expensive, as she says. However, you know, somebody who came with a lot of money could really maybe do something that's good for, that is not good for our community, doesn't support what we're trying to do. Money doesn't always solve everything, so I hope that we can come to an agreement on some common sense contribution limits for these campaigns. Thank you.
Thanks. Sheriff?
And I know I've already spoken and answered a couple of questions on this issue before, so I'll be brief. I just wanted to make a couple of quick points that were alluded to in other comments. Number one is reiterate the fact that this doesn't affect me, so I think in some respects that makes me the most credible advocate for it because it affects me not one bit. If I'm not going to be running again, which I have no intention of running again, this is going to be set up for those that are remaining and those who will seek my office in the future. And secondly, it was alluded to by District Attorney Schubert about independent expenditures, and while this amount might seem high on its face, especially perhaps compared to Supervisor's race or maybe some of the other counties, it is important to remember that we want this to be transparent, and of course, all of you know, but perhaps for the listeners and viewers at home and the public, general public, the most transparent way of campaign contributions is by the candidate, direct contributions to the candidate. As you know, there are very detailed reports that are public of who is supporting that candidate, and people can draw their own conclusions as they often do from that. What is not as clear as money that comes from independent expenditures and super PACs and some of those other, you know, shadow money, as it's been called variously, and that is the concern with having lower limits than, the money is still going to be spent for these campaigns because of where we are and the types of races we have to run. It will just be a lot less transparent and coming from all sorts of different sources that folks might not have as astute of a knowledge of where that money comes from. And then lastly, to Supervisor Natoli's point about the potential for one donor through an election, a period of four years in our case, being able to donate 87,500, that's true, I guess technically, I can only think of one donor I had that would even come close to that, so the likelihood of that is slight. I wish I knew more donors like that, I just don't. And secondly, the point about the general versus the election period, so the general being a different election period than the primary, and that's necessary because, you know, if you've had the luxury of not having to go to a runoff, if you've won in the primary like I have, like the District Attorney has in the past, not always for me, but it's been that case, then you don't have to run in the general, and so you wouldn't have the ability to gain that other 25,000. But if you did make it past the primary and have to go to a general election, that is a completely separate election. You don't just add that, I mean, obviously mechanically you add that to the money, but you're spending everything to win in the general, and if you have to start over, I'm sorry, the primary, and if you have to start over and it is a completely new campaign, so it does make sense that most of these, and I would be surprised frankly if Fresno wasn't like this as well, that most of the campaign contributions, it's certainly like that for the supervisors, it's set up by election period, not, or a cycle, not just the entirety of the election, both primary and general aggregated together. So I just wanted to clarify that it is, in fact, a separate campaign that you have to run, which is why it's for both periods. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but.
Can I just follow up on what the sheriff just said? I have looked at Alameda and Fresno, and both of them are per-election, so it is 30,000 for a special in Fresno, 30,000 for a general, and 30,000 for a primary. So it would be consistent with what the sheriff and the DA and assessor are requesting in Sacramento County as well. Alameda is not quite as defined as Fresno, but I would interpret it to be the same.
So look at that, I went out on a limb and I was right. When does that ever happen?
Supervisor Tolle?
Yeah, and again, I appreciate Lisa following up and certain comments from our District Attorney, our Assessor, and from Sheriff Jones. And again, the reason my question was, is I think as we had left this last, it wasn't real clear. Obviously, we had the discussion about the off-cycle campaign limitations, and the reason why I questioned this morning was, is that reading through the ordinance and understanding how it worked mechanically for the Board of Supervisors offices and that, you know, the application here, and so I think it's been clarified. I wasn't as much making a comment about the amount as I was the aggregate, what it could potentially be. Obviously, it's capped at that, but also then, it wasn't clear to me in the chart, and you heard my question, and the answer obviously is to what other counties our size, again, we're going to, you know, tailor this to meet our community's needs, and obviously that's supposed to be for us today, but I wanted to be clear about it so I don't think there's any confusion, and there's not now, so, yes, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the sheriff? I think that's it.
Sheriff, if you can share that contact information of who that donor was later.
Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up?
You do not have any verbal comments.
Okay. I see Ms. Evans is back in front of us. Supervisor Frost?
I was just going to add that, to the point that Sheriff Jones made regarding independent expenditures and the DA, that's true, and it's also true, I believe, that, you know, the higher the contribution limit, the more competitive, it encourages competition, and when you have a really low contribution limit, it makes it harder for new people to come in and actually win those incumbent seats. So it not only encourages, to have a reasonable amount is important because it encourages competitive races and fresh blood, new blood in seats where it's needed, and also transparency. And so I'm in support of, I think it makes sense, the ordinance, and I'm planning on supporting it. I don't know if there's more discussion, but if there's not, I'll go ahead and move approval.
There's a motion. Sir?
Second motion.
A motion and a second on the floor?
Are we going to ask any discussion?
Yeah, I think the clerk just jumped the gun on the, there we go. Were you signing up to speak, Supervisor Kennedy?
I was trying to, I just couldn't, my button isn't working.
All right, Supervisor Peters?
Thank you. I'm sympathetic to this because, well, we all should be aware, or are aware, not should be, but are aware, how much sending a mailer out to get people to know who you are and where you stand is so expensive. It runs even, and it, you know, the campaign picks how deep they want to go on the list, and campaign mailers in my district, I'm sure it's the same as in others, is $30,000 to $40,000 per mailer to send out, tell people who you are and what your positions are. And then you multiply that times five districts, I, that's a tremendous amount of money, and so I think it's reasonable to do this, and I think it's admirable that, being that we had no campaign limits, that we're suggesting that we do have them, and I would second the motion.
Supervisor Tolle?
Yeah, Ms. Chair, just wanted to call out one other item that's included in this, and it hadn't heretofore applied to the countywide elective offices, but I know that for Board Supervisor seats on any of the campaign literature in which you're seeking financial contributions, you are required, in addition to anything else, that state law may specify to actually add the warning as it relates to the county ordinance. I think it's important to note because that, again, hasn't heretofore been required for these offices, but under whatever limitations we put in place and what's being proposed here today, that would be a requirement, so it's important for candidates to know that because, and that's been in practice now for 30 years, at the supervisor level, but that'll be a new implication that goes with declaring to potential donors that, you know, they need to make this ordinance a part of their consideration, so, for limitations. That's all I want to point out. Thanks.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on the floors, and there's no further comments. Please vote.
Unanimous vote, and the motion carries with unanimous vote.
We have closed session?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That we will, that's a conclusion of our morning business, and we will recess until 2 o'clock in the closed session. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, October 6, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and reestablish your quorum?
Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Okay, so for item 42, this is the November 3, 2020 Presidential General Election Update.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Courtney.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Thank you very much for this opportunity to give you all an update on what we've been doing to prepare for the upcoming November election. And I do have a presentation here that kind of highlights a lot of the things that our department has been working on, but before I get into the presentation, I just want to say a quick note of thank you to this board for approving the move to the Voters' Choice Act in 2017. I know that was a difficult decision, there was a lot of unknowns, obviously, at that time, but now that the state and even other states in the nation are moving to that model due to the pandemic, Sacramento County is actually starting in a pretty good spot because I have been hearing from my colleagues in other counties who've been vying and competing for resources and equipment nationwide, that it's been a struggle. So thank you very much for that move, even though it was a lot of unknowns, so appreciate that support. Okay, so to touch on what we are doing for this election, as we know presidential elections are challenging enough, let alone a presidential election during a pandemic. So first, we want to go over what the voting options are for Sacramento County residents, and this is actually now more familiar statewide, as well as our neighbor counties are going to be moving to a similar model. So similar to what we experienced in 2018 and in the March primary, we have where every registered voter, active registered voter, will automatically receive a ballot in the mail. I have heard from staff that live in Rio Linda and Rosemont and downtown, that they already have their ballots in the mail. Yeah, absolutely, hell, we're good. I was expecting I'd be the one to do that, so.
Yeah, don't ever criticize us for not coming to the rescue of a fellow colleague. To make sure no one got electrocuted.
Yeah, absolutely.
Your presentation was so riveting.
You know, I, yeah, I startled Supervisor Peters, you know, right at the first bullet point. Good. Off to a good start. All right, so, so we have learned that voters are already receiving their ballot in the mailbox, they were delivered from the West Sacramento Post Office yesterday, so we're definitely seeing a good turnaround time with the United States Postal Service, so very grateful for that. How you can return your ballot is up to you. You can either return it at any one of our 70 ballot drop boxes in the county, you can return it by mail as soon as you get it, postage is paid, or you can return it at any in-person voting location. And it is important to note that you can actually drop off your voted ballot anywhere in California, as long as you're a voter in California, and I say that especially as we have folks that have been deployed out to assist with wildfire efforts and other emergency activities, so even if you're not in Sacramento County, you can still drop off your ballot anywhere in California. If you don't receive your ballot by October 19th, please contact us so we can make sure we get that situated. That is also the last day to register and vote, but again, we are seeing a timely turnaround with those ballots, so if you actually don't receive it by the end of this week, I would give us a call.
Courtney, before you leave that particular subject, if a voter does not receive their ballot by October 19th, is there a particular window after that date that you and your office and they have to rectify the issue, and can they still have their vote registered?
Absolutely. So after that time, you can use what we call a conditional voter registration process. Did I just make that go blank? Sorry.
Hello?
I broke it. The conditional voter registration process, so you do just need to be registered by October 19th in order to have a ballot mailed to you, but if you do miss that timeline, you can definitely still go to our office or any in-person voting location.
Okay, terrific.
So we have, oh, I guess I was clicking ahead, didn't realize it, okay. So we also do have in-person voting options available. We'll have 18 locations that open beginning October 24th, so the two weekends before Election Day, and all 84 of our Vote Center locations will be open October 31st through the election. Hours do vary by location to give our voters some flexibility, especially with voting during the week, and we are encouraging our voters to take advantage of those early voting days.
Courtney, Ms. Chair, just a quick question. So you're mailing ballots, but if someone goes to the polling place, they need to take their ballot with them? Is that correct? I mean.
No, not anymore. So that's how it used to be under the polling place model, where you had to bring in the ballot that was mailed to you in order to vote a regular ballot. But now we have a real-time connection to the voter file at all of our in-person voting locations, so we're able to determine right there on the spot whether or not someone has already voted anywhere in California. So at that time, if you do choose to vote in person and you don't have your ballot to surrender, we will issue you a ballot marked that you voted there so that now that mail ballot is voided out.
Okay, so if it got mailed in, either inadvertently or otherwise, and it got received.
Okay, so if it got mailed in, either inadvertently or otherwise, and it got received the next day or a few days later, then that, then the voted ballot at the polling place would be the one that counted, the other one would be nullified.
Correct. Yes, we say kind of a first one in wins. Whichever one, whether it's the mail that comes in first that we get, or you're voting in person, whatever that first one in is in, is the one we will count.
And so that, and guards against at least one of the things that's, you know, stated from time to time, and that is somehow if you could vote by mail and then show up at the polling place, and because we allow it kind of universally in California, to your point about this real-time system, it guards against that activity, as I said, whether it's inadvertent or otherwise.
Correct. Absolutely. Yeah. So those are for our in-person voting locations. Vote by mail. So there is going to be information, more information than usual on the vote by mail process this election, because we got, obviously, a lot of questions and concerns regarding how this process works, how they're verified and secured, and then also our new program called Ballot Trax, which is hosted through the Secretary of State's Where's My Ballot. So all 58 counties use this program that takes you to a site called Ballot Trax, where you can enter in your information, as long as you're a registered voter, and it will give you the updates on when your ballot's mailed, and then when we have it returned and it's been signature-checked. And if there is something wrong with your ballot, it will notify you of that as well. The United States Postal Service coordination. So we are working very closely with our local West Sacramento Post Office representative. They've been very responsive to our concerns and the national concerns regarding the vote by mail process and the timely delivery of ballots. And so, so far, we feel very confident with the timely delivery and return of election materials. It's also important to note, we had Assembly Bill 860 passed this year to accommodate for the COVID-19 pandemic. So this has a few changes to the election administration. As in the past, postmarks, as long as a ballot is postmarked on or before Election Day, it is still able to be counted and added to our final results. But before, we had to receive it three days by the time it was mailed. Now we have up to 17 days to receive a good postmarked ballot in our office. Most of our ballots that were too late were actually postmarked after Election Day, so we don't know if this will impact us too much. But just in case there are delays, this does give more time for valid postmarked ballots to get to our office to be counted.
Courtney, on that, does that actually then permit someone to cast their vote, hypothetically cast their vote while, let's say there's a close race, and they could influence the race knowing the preliminary outcome?
Yeah, I think a lot of, with the vote by mail ballots, if I'm understanding your question, that it's really going to be all those vote by mail ballots that are either dropped off on Election Day or mailed and postmarked on Election Day that are going to make those determinations for who's the winner in Sacramento County.
Well, here's, here's the scenario I'm thinking about. Is let's say I have a friend that's running for, I'll just say, school board. And, and the preliminary results, let's say two days after the third, let's say on the fifth, the two-day, the, the election results that have been tabulated to that point show it's neck and neck, neck and neck, it's less than 10 votes apart. Could I technically then have that persuade my vote based on the necessity for me to, to really push one candidate over, over the limit more so than another? Do you see what I'm saying? Is you're getting, you're making, you're getting, you're being made privy to an outcome, or at least a preliminary outcome, it seems, before you would cast a vote to influence the outcome?
So you still have to cast your ballot by that time. So it still has to be on Election Day before 8:00 PM that you either drop it off or take it to the post office to be postmarked, or dropped off in a mailbox. So after Election Day, there is no chance for someone to go back and, and change a ballot. We can correct some issues, like if someone forgot to sign their return envelope, or if their signature didn't match. But no, you do not get to redo the actual ballot itself.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay. So also ballot processing can now begin earlier. Before, we would start processing ballots 10 business days before Election Day. We now can actually start processing ballots now, start getting those signature-checked and ready for tabulation. It's important to note that we still have to wait until 8:00 PM Election Night to release those preliminary results. So what happens is these ballots are being tabulated on individual machines, and it's only after 8:00 PM Election Night when we bring those certified machines together to get the full result. So not even the staff knows what the tabulation looks like on those individual machines. We can't do that until 8:00 PM Election Night. But we can get started on it. And as long as voters vote early, we're able to get those votes in, so their vote can be included in our Election Night results release. So the earlier you get those ballots in, the earlier we can count it.
Supervisor Natoli?
Just on that, Courtney, I mean, I think you addressed part of the question I was going to ask, but it kind of goes back to security and, you know, the sanctity of the vote. And so if you're at the machine, yeah, they're individual machines, so you don't have the accumulated number. But those machines, again, without disclosing anything that might lend itself to folks hacking them otherwise, you know, how tamper-proof are those? It's one thing that the staff doesn't know, but you're using technology. I don't know if there's any Wi-Fi involved, or if it's a hard connection, or it's all embedded in the machine. Just to, again, once again, reassure folks about how secure that information is. And obviously, if it's received at your office, you have secure offices and, you know, you have protocol for employees to handle certain materials and so forth. But when you get these machines, some of these are out, you know, 11 days out, and they're, are they taken in every night? Are they left at the polling place? Are there, is there security measures in those respective areas beyond what, you know, might otherwise be just lock and key or whatever? I just, just take a moment to, I think, you know, again, this is not so new here in California, Sacramento County, but I just think in light of, you know, I think some of the concerns that are being registered elsewhere.
Absolutely. Yeah. So we, California actually has some of the strictest election security measures in the country, of course, requiring a paper ballot for every vote, and also their security requirements for the tabulation machines that, that count all the ballots. So these are actually held on a localized server that is not connected to the internet. So there is no way someone could remotely hack in to change any sort of election results or access that information. All of that is held locally in our ballot counting room, which is a room that we usually open up to observers, especially during election time. And it is under 24-hour surveillance. We always have a buddy system. No one can be in that room alone. And only six people have access to that room, including myself. And we never go in without anyone else. And it's also important to note, we only use red pens anytime we're around the ballot, which means we don't have blue or black ink for someone to mark something else before tabulation. And the reason we use red is because the scanner does not pick up on red. So even if someone wanted to write something, the scanner wouldn't pick it up. Which is also why, if you look at the ballot itself, you'll see the red oval. And it's red because it drops out, so we can even check for hesitation marks in the oval to try and determine voter intent issues. And then the final point on this with AB 860 is accessible vote by mail. This was a system that was initially designed for voters with disabilities and for our military and overseas voters to be able to go online, download their ballot, mark it themselves using their own assistive technology, print it out, and then send it in. We've had just dozens of voters take advantage of this in 2018. We've seen that slightly increase to 52 in March. But with this election, especially not knowing what COVID was going to look like this fall, the legislature allowed this option to be open to everyone. So this is something that we're also encouraging all of our assisted living facilities to know about this option, and of course, our resources for independent living. And just want to make sure that folks know this is an option out there, and it goes through the same verification as any other vote by mail ballot. So vote centers, in-person voting, even though that ballot's mailed to you, you can still vote in person if you choose. We definitely have a lot of security and safety measures in place here, including masks, gloves, sanitizer, face shields. And we do have the plastic barriers that will be between the voters and the vote center staff. Social distancing will be enforced. So what this means is there's going to be a limited number of voters allowed in the voting area at one time in order to maintain social distancing. So what we're expecting due to that is lines. So we are encouraging voters to come out and vote early because we will be enforcing social distancing. The voting booths and the equipment will be wiped down after every voter. Our election officers or poll workers are being trained on safety measures, disinfectant procedures, and how to handle difficult situations. Voters are encouraged to bring their county voter information guide with them, because not only does it contain their address, but it has their sample ballot inside. So voters can fill that out ahead of time, or even just bring in their booklet or piece of mail with them to vote in person, just to help the check-in process. As we know with the masks, sometimes there's communication barriers. So by bringing in a piece of mail or your voter information guide with you can help to expedite the voting process and limit your time inside the voting area.
Courtney, I have a question. What's the contingency plan, given the fact that you'll have to have the socially distant spacing for folks that decide to vote in person? What's the contingency plan for inclement weather? So how will you keep people relatively comfortable or dry if it's raining and people have to stay six, six feet apart and there's, you know, there's a line, you know, literally out the door and in the weather?
Yeah, so that's definitely been the concern, is, is weather and also the air quality if, if we are experiencing fires. So we did get some extra waterproof canopies to put out. And then also, we have a few contacts with some party rental places for some of the big fancy tents that we may use and deploy if needed. So that's kind of our contingency for that. We're hoping for the best.
Thank you. I am wondering about the section on following current county public health orders. When it comes to masks, as if you were listening this morning, you know, people have different strongly-held opinions. So what happens if someone refuses, absolutely refuses to wear a mask?
We are, we are not going to, oh, sorry, did I interrupt you?
But I could say more, but you go first.
Okay. We will not turn away any voter for not wearing a mask. So we are encouraging voters to wear a clean face covering, but we are following the Secretary of State's guidelines regarding allowing voters to vote. So what we're providing actually to our election officers out at the vote centers is scripts and prompts for them to use for voters without masks. We will have additional masks and face shields available and offered to every voter without one. But if they refuse, we are going to ask them to wait until we can make sure we have adequate social distancing. It will give the time for the poll workers to put on a shield for added protection in addition to the mask, so they can process those voters. You know, I think the biggest concern we have is the altercation over masks.
That, that's kind of where I was headed. And generally, these are not weightlifting, you know, gym rats that are working for you. So I am concerned about that.
Yeah.
It's, it's an expression.
These afternoon meetings are fun.
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, there, you know, we definitely have to kind of touch on that now, of course, being concerned not only about altercations or, or possible issues over masks, but also recent concerns over voter intimidation and possible harassment. And so in all cases, we have scripts and we provide procedures, including de-escalation procedures for our staff on how to handle those difficult situations. If it becomes harassing, coercion, intimidation, if it impedes the voting process in any way, then that is when we will ask that person to leave, whether or not they're an observer, whether or not they're a voter. If they're threatening our staff or threatening the other voters, they will be asked to leave. And we've already met with the Sacramento County sheriffs and gave them a list of our locations. I also reached out to our city clerks, and we have a few meetings scheduled to meet with their local police. Just so they're aware, we are not actively deploying armed forces out to these locations, but we want to make them aware of where they are in case there is a need for them to come out.
Okay, that, it's a concern. I, my office has received a number of phone calls from a couple parts of my district and worried about intimidation.
Yeah. And, you know, and we've, we've had that before in, in past presidential elections especially. And so far, when we ask them to leave, for the most part, they, they say okay. But once it gets to that point, and we've had a couple that are pretty aggressive, then we have had to call in law enforcement and they take care of it.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. No, I mean, I think that's an important subject to bring up, especially now. So let's see. We also have contingency plans in place for replacement vote centers and poll workers. So as I think you all know, a few months ago now, I think, I'd sent an email to our community partners to ask for locations. And I was just so surprised with how many folks stepped up to provide locations. It was just so great to see the community, all parties, all communities come together to provide in-person locations. So I appreciate you and your staff for helping getting out the word on that. And for poll workers, we have plenty, so many applications, we can hardly keep up. So again, I think folks are very interested, obviously, in this election, and they are coming out to help. So it's really great to see. We are encouraging voters to vote early, whether you're voting in person, whether you get that ballot back to us early. Please vote early. And that, you know, then Election Night, we'll have a better kind of idea of how Sacramento County voters have voted. The earlier we can get that back. And again, just not knowing what's going to come on Election Day, how busy it's going to be. We're encouraging voters, if you do want to vote in person, take advantage of those early voting days.
Supervisor Natoli?
Yeah. I know that there were some examples of long lines in the, in the primary. And, you know, the weather happened to be fairly, you know, good that day. So standing outside wasn't, wasn't. But if we, say, November 30, you have a stormy day and so forth, and you've got long lines. But what, what happens at 8:00? You, do, and do you get in some issues if the line, say, stretches around the building or the block or three blocks long? And you've got somebody that says, okay, here's 8:00, you know, and then some people keep showing up. How do you handle that?
So as long as you're in line by 8:00 PM, you are entitled to vote. We actually have an election officer or poll worker whose job it will be to stand at the end of the line at 8:00 so that anyone else that tries to come will be sorry, it's too late. But as long as you're in line by 8:00 PM, you will be able to vote. And so when we had that in, in March, you know, especially, and 2018, we're at Sac State, I mean, the line didn't go down till about 11:00 PM. And, because I was there until about that time. So we, especially this election, we aren't anticipating a large line. So just make sure you're in line by 8:00 PM.
What if they have ballot in hand?
If they have a ballot in hand, it still has to be dropped off by 8:00. So if they're in line by 8:00 PM and they don't realize they can just drop it off, but they're in that line, we'll go ahead and take it from them. If it's after 8:00, we'll take it from them, but we'll write a little note that says too late, because we cannot legally count that.
And, but if it's mailed Election Day, I don't know, some post offices used to process till midnight. A lot of them were not, and I think some still do it till 9:00, 9:00. I'm not sure of that. Maybe West Sacramento's 8:00. Could technically somebody still get their vote in if they came to the line, oh, I missed it, I got my ballot, go put it in the mailbox, I guess, at main post office? Or is the main post office no longer processing ballots after 8:00?
Correct. So when we made our inquiries around not only our, our main hub at West Sacramento, but also our local branches, no one is going past 6:00 PM at this point for processing.
But including West Sacramento, which is 8:00 for regular mail, if I'm not mistaken, I've had to mail letters a lot of times. So that should be clear to folks. Well, I'm just saying that because again, I know a lot of local branches, they all feed into the main branch, and they cut off earlier in the, in the afternoon. And they cut off earlier in the, in the afternoon or evening, but main branch typically has gone to eight o'clock.
Okay, I can verify specifically when that postmarked, right, right.
Before the election period ended.
Okay.
And, and I only, I don't know, get too much of a detail here, but it just seems to me, trying to accommodate folks in different ways, and because it's all mail. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so some outreach and education. Obviously, our outreach and education plan was changed slightly due to COVID. We are encouraging voters to use the ballot that is mailed to them. We're not only providing additional information in the vote-by-mail packets, the voter information guide, and also the website, but we're trying to do some webinars and live Q&amp;A events so we can address these concerns about vote-by-mail, hoping more folks will take advantage of it and see the value in it. Going back to the vote early, those early ballots are counted first. And then our joint county messaging efforts. So we started our Northern California Coalition of Election Officials. And we've done some media, you might have heard some spots on the radio already, where we're all trying to say the same thing by encouraging voters to vote early and to turn to your local election official for trusted election information. So I'm very grateful for our partners in Placer, Yuba, Sutter, Yolo, El Dorado, Nevada, San Joaquin. They've all been wonderful, so we're trying to get out the same message together. With COVID-19, we did have some concerns on how to keep the process transparent and open to observation. So we're going to be offering live streaming of our election night returns so you can see those ballots coming back each night. So Supervisor Ntoly, I didn't answer that part of your question, but all voted ballots come back each night from the vote centers. So those come back each night, and we're going to be live streaming those returns so you can see that process, the chain of custody, how we track those coming back. And then also, we'll be live streaming the tabulation as well as those ballots come in.
Same thing for the drop boxes?
Correct, drop boxes, not every night, so it depends. If it's an exterior drop box, it is daily. If it's interior, it's every other day until 10 days before Election Day, in which case it is daily or as frequently as needed. We do have all Rayleigh's and Bel Air locations as drop boxes in Sacramento County. So we're very excited about that. And of course, our partnership with the Sacramento Public Libraries, they continue to be wonderful in helping us to conduct elections.
And if I just could ask you, so assisted living facilities where in private, in previous election cycles, I think even for the primary, all the public health orders hadn't yet settled in. But now, there's a lot of restrictions on folks being able to assist those. And I don't even know about mailing addresses. I would imagine some folks can still get their mail at home, and then, you know, a family member or, you know, a loved one or a close neighbor could bring their mail to them, and then they could do it accordingly. I guess I'm just curious as to how we're trying to accommodate people's desire to, to vote that, you know, are living in those facilities. And with the limitations on visitation or even outreach, a lot of folks aren't computer literate, I would imagine, and such. So.
Yeah, so that has been, that has actually been one of our biggest concerns. So to all of our assisted living facilities, we've provided paper registration forms and information on the upcoming election. The concern, especially at one of our election community advisory meetings, was how do they get those ballots back? And so I actually have a call with AARP tomorrow. I am meeting with Pam from Agency for the Aging. And so we're going to kind of talk about how best to get those ballots back to us, whether we do some curbside collection. You know, we're trying to just throw out different ideas so we don't have to enter the facility, put anyone at risk, but they also have the ability to return their ballot. At my last community advisory meeting, there was a few folks that said they were concerned about the staff getting their ballot. They wanted to hand it to someone from the elections office, not just give it to staff. So we're gonna see what we can do to accommodate that.
Could you keep us updated? I mean, this is, you know, you know, you can come back to this meeting, but I just, I think, so we know if we get any questions or inquiries and be a conduit for that information, too.
And, you know, I have to say, this is another one of those. At the community advisory meeting, I have representatives from both the Republican and Democratic Party, and they both were like, we're on board to do whatever you need from us. And it was just really great to see. So hopefully, we have enough community partners to help us with this. So in addition to assisted living facilities, we're providing election information and important dates to our grocery stores, our schools, hospitals, care homes, food distribution centers, and also our county jails. We are encouraging folks to contact our Office for Trusted Election Information. We'll be sending out another mailer to all registered voters in about two weeks with important information and kind of last-minute tips. And then with our election results, again, not knowing whether or not we're gonna get a majority of ballots on Election Day, on the early voting days. We definitely are seeing an interest of people wanting to vote early, so we might get those faster. But we just want to make sure that, that the expectation is these are preliminary results on Election Night, and there's still a lot more work to be done to get to those final, final results. And that "Stay Home, Stay Safe" artwork was actually done by the Girl Scouts. So Catherine was first-place winner for the vote-by-mail campaign from Supervisor Frost's district. So we are including that in our direct mailer as well.
Supervisor Peters?
Yeah, thank you. Courtney, what are the bets inside your department about how many ballots you get through on Election Night?
Okay, so.
Because you're being able to count them early.
Right, so historically, what we've seen with the Voters' Choice Act is about half the total number of ballots get dropped off on Election Day.
Yeah.
So we're, we're anticipating, especially if we see a larger increase in turnout. I mean, we could have, we could have about 400,000 ballots dropped off or mailed on Election Day. But with that early voting, even though we've said it for a few elections now, the fact we had a line outside our office yesterday at 8:00 AM, I, I really do think we might see more early voting. So, so I'm hoping for that. I'll probably lose that bet.
We know how anxious the candidates are to.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Supervisor Frost?
Courtney, I just wanted to commend you on your website, the information you have on the website. There are a lot of voters who are calling in and asking, is there voter fraud? And is it safe? And what's happening? And I really feel like you guys did a good job on the website.
Thank you, Supervisor. And, and based on those questions and comments, we did create that election security page and talk about the ballots. So hopefully, that's information to help. And also, thank you Supervisor Peters, because you helped spur those changes to our website. So thank you. So on October 5th, we sent out the ballots from our West Sacramento hub. All of our ballot drop boxes are open, ready to go. And then our office is open as well for in-person early voting. And that's the only in-person option open now until October 24th. October 19th is the last date to update your information or register to vote in order to receive your ballot in the mail. Again, if you miss that deadline, you still can go to any vote center to vote. But if you want your ballot mailed to you, you do need to be registered to vote by that date. October 24th is when we have 18 vote center locations that open. And then on October 27th is the last day we will mail ballots to voters to make sure that they get it timely. So we are planning to do some deliveries. So if folks do need a ballot delivered to them, we can work that out with our ballot transporters that we're going to have. But it, but it is the last day we will mail ballots out. October 31st, all of our 84 vote center locations will be open, including the administration building. And then on November 3rd, Election Day, so all ballots must be dropped off or postmarked by that date. And then December 1st is the certification of our final election results. That is required statewide. So in the primary, you might have known there were some extensions granted to the certification period. We certified before then, but some other counties, it took them a little bit longer. But in this case, with the fact that you have the presidential electors, you have a lot of the offices taking office and being sworn in in December, this is a hard date. So we have to make sure everything is done, reconciled, accounted for, audited by that date.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Pardon?
Does that conclude your presentation?
Oh, yeah, yes, and that concludes my presentation. I guess I never figured out how to close things down, yeah.
So.
Do the next slide.
Oh, do I have a next slide? Oh, my gosh, thank you.
So it doesn't conclude your presentation?
So Nav's on it. All right, so I forgot this was in here. All right, so some additional resources, thank you. We have obviously our website with updated information regarding this election and the vote-by-mail process. Our election administration plan is on there along with our COVID-19 amendment. So if you wanted more details on what we are doing to ensure the safety and security of the election, you can view that plan. We just wrapped up public comment, so the revised version should be published on our website on Friday. We also have an election outreach toolkit that we can share, and we have been sharing with the community. So please, you can email me if you would like a link to that, and it has a lot of information and materials. And if you want hard copies, we're happy to deliver those as well. And then Ballot Tracks is that tool that we use to track your ballot, that you can get those, those updates on the status of your ballot. And then that Vote By Mail Simple, Safe, Secure is the new insert in the Vote By Mail packet that just lets voters know what to do if they've made a mistake on their ballot. And of course, the reminder to sign that return envelope. Because all you need to do to vote by mail and have your vote counted is to sign that envelope. Okay, and I think that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. So before we get to Supervisor Ntoly, I just want to express my thanks to, to you and all your very, very capable staff. I had a chance to be in your office and your, see your operation up close about a month before the COVID-19 stay-at-home order. And it was really remarkable just to see, even at that time, when it wasn't probably anywhere near the activity level that you're at now, just how diligent everyone is in terms of making sure that the whole process is, and system is, is, got a lot of fidelity to it. So I want to just, again, thank you on behalf of the board for, for all that you do. Question. Yesterday, I was listening to National Public Radio, and they were interviewing an election official from some county, I think, in the Midwest. And they were remarking that one of the most common problems for mail-in ballots that aren't, that aren't counted is non-matching signatures. Is, if, especially for, for folks that might get a little older in life and maybe due to some physical impairment, maybe their signature, their handwriting becomes shaky, or their signature changes over time. What is, what's the, what's the, the advice that you can give to folks about making sure that their signature is always going to match what you have on file?
And we do that signature comparison, and it is important to note, it is a comparison. It is not an exact match. And we actually, our, our awesome team goes through actual training, and we've had training even from FBI representatives on how to check for signature matches and then changes over time, looking for common characteristics, slant, pen pressure, all of the size, all of those things we look for. But if you're not sure, especially if you haven't registered or re-registered in a while, we definitely encourage you to do so. You can also look, if you register to vote online, you can look at your driver's license and see the signature there. And if that's still your signature, you're good. And if your signature doesn't match, we will reach out to you to give you a chance to correct that. Now, what's interesting is in March, we had, because if you don't sign your return envelope, we send you a letter. And we had about a 50% return rate. It was over 1,500 voters. 50% of those got their signature back to us. For signature mismatches, it was only an 18% return rate. And we received feedback that it was folks not realizing they couldn't sign for someone else. So that is definitely a safeguard we have in place. And some of these, we had a mom that tried to sign her son's, because he was away. And we had someone that thought that power of attorney was acceptable, and it's not for ballots. So some of that messaging, as far as who can sign, I think, you know, we can definitely do some improvement on. But if you are concerned about your signature, what it looks like, we can also send you a copy of your registration form. But if you haven't registered to vote in a while, you might want to go ahead and update that.
The Ballot Tracks app that you mentioned, that will notify you, if I heard you correctly, it'll notify you if there's any interruption in the processing of your ballot, correct?
Correct, yes.
Would that include a non-matching or a non-comparable signature?
Correct.
Okay, great, good to know, thank you. Supervisor Ntoly?
Just a quick question. So this time around, you've added, I don't think, seven or eight more vote centers. Were those a result of, we anticipate heavier turnout, or where you didn't expect such a turnout last time and got it? I'm just curious as to, and I know you had to look for locations that weren't available that you'd had previously, so just quickly.
Yeah, we, it's, it's the anticipated turnout. And, and that's also why we increased our ballot drop boxes from 58 to 70. It's for, hopefully, to help accommodate that increased turnout. We're processing about 5,000 records over the weekend. We're getting about 1,000 new voter registrations a day. So we would not be surprised if we hit over 900,000 voters by the time November 3rd comes.
What do you got today? I know last week when you had the data, I reported almost 860,000. So it sounds like you've added.
866,000 now, over, yeah, last I checked.
Thanks.
Supervisor Frost?
Courtney, will the Ballot Tracks tell you if you've, if you voted and then someone else sent in another ballot with a discriminating signature? Will it tell you if there was a duplicate ballot? Or, or does it just tell you if there's a delay in your voting?
You know, that's a good question. I don't think it got that granular, if there's a duplicate ballot. I know it will give messages for no signature and signature mismatch. I don't know about if there is the attempt to vote twice or to, you know, if someone returns two ballots. I'll, I'll look into that.
But if someone did, if someone did have a duplicate and, and it got there before their actual ballot got there, there are people who wonder about this. If there, if someone could actually usurp their vote. But the, the signature would have to match.
The signature would have to match.
And is that, look, is that checked by computer, or?
We, we have what we call an automatic signature recognition, which has to look for, I believe it's an 80% signature match, and it only catches about 10% of our signatures. So even if there's a slight anomaly or something different, then it is reviewed by a person. If there's still issues, then it goes up to Supervisor, Manager, and then I would have the final say.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Peters?
Back to the signature question, Courtney. When you get your ballot in the mail, it's addressed to you as a certain name, like Susan Peters. Is that the name I need to sign?
No. So if you wanted to do S. Peters or Sue Peters, we would just look for those common characteristics. It does not have to sign exactly as your.
What am I supposed to sign? What's on the, I had someone ask me, what signature do I, did I sign by my initials? Did I sign by my first name? And I said, well, I'd look at your ballot that comes in the mail, because I didn't know.
I, I think that's a good rule of thumb to say, however it's addressed to you is probably most likely how you signed. And again, if it's not exact, we just look for those common, commonalities, but.
So if you miss the middle initial or the senior or whatever it is.
But it's best to check your license, right?
License, yeah, I was gonna say that, Courtney. Check your driver's license.
Yeah, check the driver's license, right.
Signature on it.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's a good, that's a good rule of thumb.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, for everything you're doing.
Ms. Chair, did I just fall into item 17 this morning about the grant? So how much?
Yes, that's right.
He's ready.
Yeah, so, thank you, thank you for that. So the grant covers, through the Center for Civic Life and Technology, was offering a grant nationwide to election officials. And the great thing about this grant is it's very open-ended as far as what we can use it for. Everything from our locations to PPE, to the cleaning of our locations, our poll worker recruitment and staffing efforts, even being able to claim reimbursements for the work at the vote centers, and a very general, anything regarding the mail-in ballot process, which obviously, between the consumables. which, obviously, between the consumables and then the time it takes to process, we're hoping to claim all of that. We still don't know the amount yet, so we're just kind of seeing how it goes, but whatever we can claim, we will claim. It's pretty open-ended.
And when would you likely know back? Is there a deadline when they're supposed to make a determination?
We've been hearing from other counties that they started to hear back, so I'm hoping it's any day now.
Okay.
I'm hoping to get that kind of confirmation soon.
Okay, thanks, Courtney.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, before we go on to our next item, I understand that we have one off-agenda speaker in the phone queue?
Correct, we have one off-agenda.
We'll go ahead and take that speaker now.
Okay, thank you. Caller, please start with your comments.
To let the board know that at two prior meetings earlier this summer, I called in and actually wrote in an email apprising the board that your agenda packet is not easily downloadable to the public. When I have tried to download it even yet this morning, the agenda packet, it just goes to a gray screen and never downloads. I communicated with your staff two or three weeks ago regarding this problem, and I was told that I needed to download into my cell phone or onto my laptop Chrome in order to download it. I still can't get it, and I don't have enough storage in my phone, and I've had friends who have told me they have the same problem downloading, even from their laptop computers. My other comment is that your public comment line only allows public to participate on one item. If you're in the queue, you can't speak to another item. You just get to select one item or an off-agenda comment. That, to me, restricts people from public participation. And this morning, prior to your meeting at 9:15, I called in and I registered that I wished to speak to item number 36, the consent item, and I sent in an email asking that it be pulled off of the consent calendar. That item was actioned on without my allowance to make public comment to it, as I asked in my email and as I registered into the queue for item 36 and 47. Those are my comments, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you have no other public comments?
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Item 43 is the presentation to the Board of Supervisors on the 2021 through 2029 housing element.
Good afternoon, members of the board. LeAnn Moffett, your planning director, here to give the staff presentation. Let me get my binder open here. Pleased to be here to have a dialogue with the board on the housing element. I know how important housing topics and affordable housing is to this entire board and each board member individually, so very pleased to be engaging with you today on this topic. Certainly, the county has a commitment to ensuring that all citizens of Sacramento County have a safe place, or have a place to live, which is one of the key intents of the housing element. And the objective today is to engage in a dialogue with the board members, particularly about the housing element overall, but particularly regarding a number of new programs that staff is contemplating putting in the element as a result of public outreach, and we want to get your feedback on those programs. I want to recognize the planning staff who are working on this effort, including LeAnn Mueller and Kate Rose, who are here today. And we also have representatives of Housing and Redevelopment Agency, including Tyrone Rodrick Williams and Susan Vizi. They're key partners in the development of the housing element. And we have ongoing assistance from a variety of county partners, including but not limited to Cindy Kavanaugh with Homeless Initiatives, Ann Edwards and her staff in Human Assistance, the Public Works Agency staff, and a variety of other county departments and agencies. Also, before I get started, I wanted to note that we've been in front of the board several times recently with a number of grants that are allowing us to make progress on some of these important housing topics. They are not the focus of my presentation today, but just to briefly recap, we've been in front of you with an SB 2 Year 1 grant that is allowing us to look at some processing changes around incentives and streamlining. We just received that money a bit ago, so we're just underway with some of those efforts. We were in front of you with the SB 2 Years 2 through 6, also known as the PLHA grant. We don't have those dollars yet, but your board directed how those funds will be spent to facilitate the actual production of housing, such as senior rental housing, homebuyer assistance programs, a PLHA trust fund to add to the other trust funds to prompt the construction of affordable housing, and required funding to the cities of Folsom, Eilton, and Galt. We've also been in front of you with a LEAP grant that has six sub-items, including working on our housing trust fund. That is one activity that we are up and running on. We have a consultant working on the NEXA study for the housing trust fund. That's the fee on non-residential development, so our work is well underway on that program. And we're making good progress and hope to be back in front of the board with a dialogue on that, an update to that housing trust fund in the not-too-distant future. The LEAP grant will also help fund other activities, including accessory dwelling unit construction plans, and will be, and any needed changes to our zoning ordinance around accessory dwelling units, zoning code amendments for supportive housing. It will also fund some preparation of the housing element, and then a future infill program that will, staff will tackle after adoption of the housing element. And then on October 20th, we have another REAP grant in front of the board that, again, will be to offset costs of the housing element. So that's some background activity that your board has already seen and is ongoing that I wanted to report on. So moving on to the overview slide, what is a housing element? Again, that is a required element of the general plan. This housing element period will cover 2021 to 2029, and it is the only element that requires to be certified by the state, in this case, State Housing and Community Development Department, and it requires annual reporting. I know the board is well aware that planning staff come before you typically every March with an annual report on the general plan overall, and a focused report on the housing element, also known colloquially as the APR, that we have to turn in to the state showing progress. I'm, in this presentation, going to briefly go over the housing element chapters. I'm going to touch upon housing affordability in the region and where we are on that. I'm going to talk about the regional housing needs allocation. I'm going to talk about the process timeline, and then I'm going to focus on the draft programs, which is the key intent of the presentation today. So briefly, this slide shows the nine chapters of the housing element. They are in various states of being drafted by staff right now. There's a lot of technical information in many of these chapters, and many of the background is prescribed by state law or housing and community development requirements. The most discretionary component of the element is the chapter with the programs in it, which is why we want to have an initial dialogue with your board today on that component before we wrap up our internal preliminary draft. The next couple of slides focus on where we are in the unincorporated county, in the county as a whole, with regard to housing affordability. This slide shows the various income categories focused on extremely low income, very low income, low income, and moderate. There's also an above moderate, but we haven't focused on that in this slide. It shows the income estimate for a family of four by each of those categories, and then it compares that with the affordable monthly rent, and it shows the median rent in the county inclusive of the cities. Again, this is for a family of four. And then it shows the affordable purchase price and the median home sales price in the region. And then I have a couple of follow-up slides to graphically show the gap in affordability levels. So for a family of four, for a sales price, there is a very significant gap at the extremely low-income level, a gap of over $255,000. At the very low-income level, $181,000 gap, and at the low-income level, a $70,000 gap for people to be able to afford homes. So you can see how difficult it would be for folks in those various income categories to purchase a medium-priced home in the Sacramento region.
LeAnn?
Yes.
Before you continue.
Sure.
Is the rule that applied back when I was a practicing planner of, I believe it's 30% of your gross income, or is it your debt income? I forget which, but I thought it was 30% of your income was supposed to be, that was like the maximum to assign for housing costs?
Yes.
So is that still what feeds into the computation of the various income thresholds in terms of figuring out for a family of four what constitutes what?
These are based on HUD data, and I would probably have to look to some of our housing experts to describe exactly the math, or get back to you about how the math is being calculated.
You can get back to me, but I assume it hasn't changed?
Yes, I don't think it's changed dramatically, no. Yes, I think you're right.
Supervisor Ntolle?
LeAnn, as you use a chart like this, you use the median price, I assume, of a single-family dwelling. I don't know what the comparison is here, but, and I know that there are differences when it comes to start calculating costs, when you provide some permanently supportive services and so forth in the rental market, but you show the challenge here in the housing market, assuming someone had, there was a qualified buyer that had credit that could make the down payment that goes with this. I mean, the gaps you show are in income, but it doesn't show necessarily the ability to even make the down payment. And yet, we see reports, and again, I don't want to exaggerate it, but, you know, there were recent articles of, you know, apartment conversions, but even construction costs being, I could say, double this, if not triple and quadruple in other jurisdictions in the state. Obviously, our housing market doesn't reflect, you know, that severe contrast. But how do we, I mean, kind of combine not only the pressures in the rental market, which, you know, if they reflect costs in the private sector and then the cost of rent, but certainly in the single-family market, and recognizing that if you can't get into housing, if you're in the market to purchase, how are you even going to get into rental piece of it? If you're looking at some of these costs, and then you look at the deep subsidies, and you know, some of your other charts are going to show some of the gaps, it seems to me like we're not just in a quadri, but in this circle of folks who, one, are seeking housing that may have some income but are not going to make it on this chart, but secondly, they're not going to make it on the rental chart either. And to Supervisor Surtis' question about the assumptions regarding how much of your discretionary income is available for your housing costs, I imagine you've got folks that are, you know, probably paying 50% of their household income just to stay in housing, whether it's rental or, you know, once qualified for a home, there's some appreciation, you get some value there, but you still got to make all the payments.
I bet that's still low.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, I think that's why we want to get to some of the programs and talk to you about some of the programs we've developed, and see whether you think those programs are adequate to get us through the housing period. So different product types and different things we can do to increase the overall supply of housing, as well as both market rate and subsidized affordable housing.
I guess the other comparison I want to just draw here, though, is that, you know, when you see apartment construction and some of the costs associated with that, I mean, the median price, I don't know what the median price is for a new apartment. I'm sure it varies.
The next slide, right?
The next slide is the rental.
I meant about the rental, so then if that reflects a certain, you know, cost to construct and to maintain and oversee, you know, we're seeing certainly in some of the arenas, it's costing well over $300,000 per unit in apartments.
Right. It's definitely a challenge.
And again, I don't see, I don't certainly put that all, you know, we'll hear comments, I'm sure, about government and government regulation and so forth. I mean, there's a whole lot of factors in here that, you know, aren't necessarily reflected on what this county or what cities necessarily do or don't do, so.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
So this slide shows the gap in rental affordability, again, for a family of four as compared to the median rent in the region. Clearly, you know, there are rental available above and below the median, but this shows you a typical gap in rental income based on median rent.
Real quick on that one?
Yeah.
So this, again, is based on family of four, correct?
This is, this one is based on a family of four.
So do we know whether or not we're talking about comparable bedroom configuration in these, you know, the assumption about what they're renting? In other words, are they renting a, you know, a two-bedroom apartment, and, you know, some of the kids have to sleep, share a room, that kind of thing?
Yeah. So in some of the background chapters, which I haven't included in this, as deep of a dive in this particular presentation, we do have data and analysis on overcrowding and other factors. We just haven't put that, all that data in this particular presentation, because, again, this was intended to be a focus on some of the new overall programs. But we will see that when we get the preliminary draft housing element issued, there'll be a lot more data and background information in those chapters. We're still wrapping up that work.
Okay, thank you.
But we will make that available to the board and to the public. So this slide is simply intended to show the types of jobs that may be engaged in by folks at various income categories. This particular slide is for a single individual. So this indicates what a single person, a typical worker in the food preparation and serving industry, or personal care, or farming, might fall in the very low-income category. And if on that wage you had to support more than one person, you might actually even fall lower than that. Low-income categories could be folks in the sales industry, or healthcare support, or office and administrative support. And at the moderate income level, it could include teachers, or librarians, or people in community and social services, or maintenance and repair-type activities. So that's just sort of characterizing that, you know, people with regular types of jobs may fall into some of these housing affordability categories. The next slide is on the regional housing needs allocation. I know the board knows this, but for anyone out there who's watching this presentation, what happens is the State Department of Finance projects the number of housing units that are going to be needed at the state level. That number is given to each of the local COGS, and then in our case, CACOG, gives each of the local jurisdictions a target number that they need, are expected to meet, and target in the housing element at the various income levels. So this slide shows the unincorporated counties' regional housing needs allocation, which is then translated in the housing element in terms of not just programs, but also the land inventory that we need to show or develop. For this go-around, the total number of units that we're projected to need to accommodate between 2021 and 2029 is a little over 21,000 units, of which over 7,000 are in the low-income category, over 4,000 in the moderate-income category, and just under 10,000 in the above-moderate-income category. And the percentage is shown in the right. I did want to give you some comparison as to what our, the arena in the current period is, which is January 2013 to October 31st, 2021. The total in that period was 13,844 units, of which 5,357 were in the three low-income categories. categories. So our total number of units that we have to accommodate in the low-income categories is increased by just over 1,800 units. So that's going to play out when, in terms of coming up with adequate land for our land inventory component of the housing element. Staff does anticipate, and I think we've messaged to the board and board members before, that we do anticipate having to do a rezon program to identify additional sites. We're still working on our inventory, so I can't yet tell you what that number is. And we are working diligently away to try to get to a number so we can engage with the board on that. And we will have up to two years after adoption of the housing element to finish the rezon program. Of course, we would like to get started sooner and get some of that work done. And I think the other key issue there is trying to work with cooperative property owners so that we're not faced with having to rezon properties over people, individuals' objections. So that will be a key aspect that we'll be trying to achieve. We have done this only one time before. I did work on that. It was a pretty lengthy, challenging process, but we did that time. We were able to come up with sites where we didn't have active opposition by any property owners. So again, that would be our goal.
Leanne, before we get to supervisor Nattoli, he has a question here, I'm sure, but it would be helpful on a chart like this to understand what your net, what net densities you're using, what the assumptions are about net density, so that we can have an idea in mind of when you say, "We need almost 2,700 low-income units," is that based on, you know, already 20? Is that based on something lower density? That would be useful information, at least, for the supervisor, especially when we get into a more detailed discussion about what it means in terms of prospective, you know, rezoning exercises and what we need to start thinking about in terms of, you know, pushing the envelope on our densities to hit these targets. Supervisor Nattoli?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. What's really revealing to me on this chart, and I think that makes the mountain so much harder to climb, is that when you're looking at the VLI and ELI categories and the charts you've shown previously relative to the, you know, the distance between people's income and their ability to pay, both in the, if there was interest in purchasing, but certainly even in the rental market, and because I think it boils down to, you know, you can have land available, which becomes a piece of the equation, but those require deep, deep subsidies, particularly the ELI, and they require ongoing subsidies. And in order to construct, you can have, you know, there are a myriad of programs for people to apply for, and tax credits, and, you know, and certainly fee waivers and so forth. But when you look at the subsidy or the, making up the difference in those categories, and now you're talking about, you know, 4,500 units or close to it in that category alone, or those two categories combined, and there are some differences, but not much as it relates to the income portion of it, I don't know, Leanne. I mean, you know, it's strategies in the housing element, and this is not just for you, but I think it certainly goes to work that this, you know, county has looked at over the years. And if that's where, I mean, you've got other areas where you need to, you know, try to meet the need, but those where the income is so restricted and will be ongoing, because once you, you know, we dedicate an ELI unit, that's what you've done, I don't say in perpetuity, but certainly for a long, long time, how do we even make an end road? And I know you're going to get to it, or at least I saw it in the staff report, the numbers have been built since the last update, which aren't very much, maybe 100 or 100 and a half in those categories. And, you know, that number is most daunting on this chart, as far as I'm concerned, because I don't see any way, and you can look at, you know, doing the Housing Trust Fund, or, you know, or the, you know, the update of, on commercial space and so forth, but even if you bring in a few million dollars, it doesn't begin to even scratch at this, as far as I'm concerned. And so, any thoughts about from a staff, any ideas you're going to bring this board? You know, obviously, it's going to be largely built in the private market, and if the private market's not building it without the subsidies.
Right.
How do you get there?
It is a absolutely daunting challenge. I am not going to try to dissuade you from that comment. I'm going to go through the programs that we've come up with, and we'd love your feedback if you think we have missed the mark, or you have any other ideas of things we should explore. Because it certainly is a daunting challenge.
No, and again, it's not taking any away from what you're suggesting. I mean, there are certain strategies you're bringing to us, and, you know, they can be helpful.
Right.
But, you know, in my view, beyond having available land, which is a key component, how do you pay for it?
Right. It's...
It is important to note, however, that this is not a production mandate, right?
It is.
This is a, translate, of course, we all want, we will want to have this manifest itself in terms of the actual availability of, you know, a consummate amount of affordable housing based on our need here in Sacramento County. But the law itself is not a production mandate. It requires local jurisdictions to zone appropriately based on the needs, correct?
Correct. And I appreciate the board's sophistication and understanding, a lot about housing element law. It shows that we've been in front of you, and you do understand this. It is not a production mandate, although the state law is more and more wanting to see each time you analyze your housing element whether you are doing an adequate job, and then they want you to come up with new programs if you are not. So it's not a, not a production mandate, but they do analyze how we're doing. And you asked about the densities. Basically, we are doing almost a site-by-site analysis of each of the available properties, and so the densities do vary. Your board may be aware that we are in a region that typically now requires in state law us to look closer to 30 units to the acre. A lot of our zoning is closer to 20, so one of our programs and efforts will be trying to look at getting more density out of our current sites as well as future sites. So when we come back in with the actual inventory, we will have a list by parcel showing the number of units and the density that we are assuming on a parcel-by-parcel basis. So it does get kind of difficult to do this math on an aggregate basis because it can be very, it's very parcel-specific.
Right. But I mean, at some point, you have to work with law of averages and then kind of get down into the weeds.
So we're probably looking at at least 25 units per acre and maybe closer to 30.
Well, we also, in addition to zoning, we'll, we also be looking at things like maybe more precise parking ratios that gives us, you know, more flexibility on any given parcel based on, let's say, proximity to public transit, making some assumptions about the true need for parking that would otherwise take, you know, acreage out of your net calculation that could actually be used to achieve a higher density and therefore perhaps get to a product that, you know, is more capable of deep targeting.
Yeah, we can. And we don't want to overdo it, though, in terms of then you have to make findings against the assumptions that you put in the housing element. So there's a fine line between wanting to look too optimistic when you're preparing the housing element, and then subsequently when development comes in, having to make findings against the assumptions you made in the housing element.
I assume, I assume OPR still gives us some, some current guidance on those types of questions in terms of what we can assume or consider in terms of the palette of opportunities in addition to zoning that we can use to kind of maximize the efficiency of parcels, right?
Yeah, we can look at that, as well as our own recent history, including projects that we have recently approved near transit, where those projects have asked for various waivers, like through our HIP program or density bonus programs, because the state wants to see what you're actually building at. So some of those recent examples, we can use to justify higher densities in certain locations. So the next slide is just an overview of the timeline of this overall project. We did lose a couple months on the back end, the end date of certification of May of 2021. It was, we were supposed to have several months longer, but that changed for a variety of reasons. So we did public outreach in the spring of 2020. We did move our outreach and transitioned that from in-person workshops to accommodate the COVID situation to online and interactive sessions. We did an initial survey that we translated into six languages, a follow-up survey that was done in English and Spanish. We did an informational webinar that was on our housing element webpage and is actually now on YouTube. We did two public outreach webinars, five focus group meetings, and we went before the Disability Advisory Committee. We are, then we did a Planning Commission workshop and this board workshop here today. We are going back out for a Phase Two outreach plan with two public webinars, two focus group meetings. We're going to do a round over a three-month period at all 14 community planning advisory councils, and we are open to attending other meetings. For example, we just scheduled something with Legal Services of Northern California, so if there's other groups like that who want us to come out and speak to them, we will be available for that. Then we need to prepare the draft. We're hoping to have a preliminary draft by the end of November for everyone to see, including the board. We will submit that for an initial round with the Housing and Community Development Department to get their read on whether our, whether it's looking good and what kind of comments they have. And then we go through hearings, and then the board will see it, and then after that, then we send that back to HCD for review. So that's the general outline there. Moving on to the program component of the approximately 100 existing programs, about two-thirds will be continued or somewhat updated, about a third will be discontinued because they've been completed or obsolete. And the focus today is on the 21 new draft programs. Of those 21 programs, eight are either associated with grants that we've already been in front of your board and you've already nodded yes to, or we have to do them per state law. And then there's 13 that are really the focus of today's hearing. Going through each of those programs, I'm going to be using Attachment 1, so if you want to follow along with the actual wording of those, I would really encourage you to bring up Attachment 1 so you can see each program. So in the, there are two slides on mandated or committed ones, so I'm going to try to run through those fairly quickly. I've already mentioned Programs 3 and 4, which are the accessory dwelling unit construction plans and promotion from the LEAP program, the infill program, also from the LEAP program, the allowing by right development on land inventory sites. And what I mean by by right development, I was asked about that term, we basically mean it doesn't trigger a discretionary land use entitlement like a use permit. So it's ministerial or non-discretionary, so we might still do non-discretionary design review, but that's what we mean by that term. So it is very important that on the sites that we put particularly for affordable housing in the inventory, that we don't have entitlement barriers. The state will not look favorably upon that. And then I've already mentioned the rezon program, so we will be getting back to you on that program as we develop that. Incentives, we need to revise our density bonus incentives to be consistent with recent changes in state law. We also need to, that's Program 13. Program 12 is, again, making our zoning code amendments consistent with state law around emergency housing. And then Program 14, funded by the LEAP program, is looking at the supportive living uses, and we'll be working closely with our homeless initiatives and our social services partners, including making sure that we incorporate any information from the county-adopted Sacramento Homeless Plan into our programs and assumptions. So any questions on any of those programs?
I just want to make sure, Leanne, you and I talked briefly about this in my briefing with you earlier this week. My understanding is that staff is currently working on a more robust commercial fee program that could be used to augment our Housing Trust Fund, Treasury for the use of some of those deep subsidies that Supervisor Nattoli was rightfully acknowledging is, are going to have to be present to hit some of these deep targets. Is that, I couldn't find it in here. Is there a reason why it's not listed here?
It's not really a new program, so I think that's why we didn't list it. But yes, I, as I mentioned before, we are actively engaged. We have a consultant underway preparing a nexus study for the Housing Trust Fund, and our next step is to develop some staff thoughts around where the fees may be, and then obviously to engage with the public and with, ultimately with the board on an update like of that. That is one of the programs that has not been indexed or updated in many years, so we felt it was important to tackle that one immediately, and your board also expressed your interest in having us do that.
Yeah.
So that is one that we are well underway on. So we're not waiting for that to be a new program in the housing element. We're tackling that concurrently with the housing element.
Good. That's something that I have expressed a lot of interest in the last couple of years, especially when you look at some of our neighboring jurisdictions and look at the order of magnitude that, upon which they're levying some of that fee revenue to help in their provision of affordable housing. I think we're, quite frankly, probably years or decades behind in terms of having something that is fair and doable, that really gives us, puts us on equal footing with some of the, some of those other jurisdictions and their ability to provide more affordable housing. Supervisor Nattoli?
Well, I didn't get out ahead of you, because I know you're kind of doing these in not all numerical order, you're doing them in different categories, so.
Sorry.
Then I'll let you go through these, and I'll come back. I wanted to ask you about 10 and 19 and some of the other ones you mentioned, but you haven't got to those in your charts yet, so.
Okay.
I'll let her finish, Mr. Chair, and then I can come back, so.
Okay. Moving on then, and obviously, we can come back to any programs you want to talk about when I'm done with the staff presentation. So I have the next slide on the, some of the new draft programs that we have not talked about yet. The first one in terms of allowing housing in sites without a discretionary entitlement. Several housing elements ago, we moved, and in our zoning code, we moved to allowing multifamily in apartments in some of our commercially-zoned properties, and staff is now looking at adding the BP Office Zone to that list, because that is not allowed without a use permit right now. So that would be Program 10, and obviously, we would have to actually return to the board to amend the zoning code to do that, but this would be the program that would make that commitment to do that. Program 16 has to do with what we're calling here on this slide, missing middle housing. And as I understand, missing middle in state HCD world actually means deed-restricted affordable housing. What we mean here is really naturally occurring affordable housing. And I think that's what you were getting to in some of your earlier questions, which is product types that are not deed-restricted, but are affordable people, to people maybe at the very upper end of low-income or the moderate level. So in some communities, that might, might actually be like small lot, single-family product, and other communities, that might be duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes.
Didn't we used to call it affordable by design?
It used to be called affordable by design, and now the new term is naturally occurring affordable housing.
Yeah.
So yes, there's, there's always an evolution in the terminology, but yes, you are correct. So that is Program 16, and that will need some zoning code amendments to facilitate this wider range of housing types. And then Program 7 is fee waivers and deferrals. So we do have some fee waiver and deferral programs, and we would be working with our Infrastructure Finance section to see if we can return to the board with any revisions or new programs to increase various fee waivers and deferrals, particularly for affordable housing. Program 9 has to do with the fact that, again, we've been relying on allowing apartments in our commercial zones with moderate, limited to moderate success, seeing a lot of that actually happening. So at the staff level, in order to continue to rely on all of those sites in the inventory, we're thinking we need to develop some additional incentives to try to encourage residential on those commercial properties. Program 20, relatively small program, but in a few limited cases throughout the county, we have a number of sites, properties that are individual parcels that collectively may be zoned for apartments, and so we would like to offer some waivers or deferrals to consolidate those, to facilitate the production of an affordable housing project or apartment project on those multiple, multiple individual properties. Program... Program Twenty-One is reducing fees for people, reducing or waiving fees for individuals who want to come in and consider higher-density properties. Okay, moving on to the category of tenant protections, we have Program Fifteen. Again, this is a relatively small program, but in the context of other programs that we already have in the housing element, where code enforcement engages in a refugee academy, so we would be recognizing their ongoing efforts there. And then Program Eighteen, I think, is more significant. So Program Eighteen says, "The county will study just cause eviction ordinances or other programs to help keep precariously housed tenants in their homes and present findings and recommendations to the Board." This is definitely one that was a source of, subject of discussion in outreach programs, particularly given the pandemic situation. It is a rapidly evolving subject topic with the state engaging a lot, so this would be really looking at where the state ends up, and does the county want to do something different or more. Obviously, we also need to recognize that we have, you know, smaller property owners, you know, who may have one rental or something, so, you know, there has to be kind of a balance between small folks versus corporate rentals and the tenants themselves. So there'd be a fair amount of work to be done here, so I wanted to particularly point this one out and see if there's any Board reaction there. Next, we have Program Two. Staff and the individuals expend a lot of energy on the owner-builder exemption in our affordable housing ordinance, and so we'd like to tweak that maybe and see if there's an easier and simpler way of doing that. Program Eleven is universal design, so this really has to do with trying to increase the number of accessible units created in the market and to ensure that they're more adaptable, and there is an overlap with this in terms of affordable housing, because you do find individuals at the lower-income categories sometimes do need accessible and adaptable homes. So this would be trying, seeking to expand the promotion of universal design to create more accessible units. Program Seventeen is having staff do another round of affordable housing education and outreach, which we haven't done for some time. This would be, for example, going to our community planning advisory councils and other appropriate venues and groups to educate folks on that. Program Nineteen is recognizing that our current zoning code is, really has these old mobile home park zone, and it really doesn't recognize the new trend of tiny homes and some of the newer housing product types, so it would be developing zoning code amendments that recognize what's actually happening out there in the world right now. And then the final slide is on Program Number One. This has been the subject of much discussion and debate, including at the Planning Commission Workshop, so this is the only one where I actually put the specific wording on the slide. We heard a variety of opinions through the outreach process everywhere, from we should go back to doing an inclusionary program to we shouldn't touch the program at all. So we sort of ended up somewhere in the middle, which is why we want the Board to make any comments that you have on this. And I will let you generally read the side, but this has us doing an evaluation of the current program to see whether it's really achieving its intended 10%. The Planning Commission had talked about the second sentence, which is looking at the economic feasibility, particularly if we're looking at an inclusionary program or inclusionary component, and then based on the outcome of those returning to the Board to see whether you want to make any changes to the affordable housing ordinance. And that concludes the staff presentation.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, Chair Serna. I have a couple of questions relating to a couple of items. On Item 10, residential uses on, what'd you call that, right, by right housing? You are, you're saying that there are no entitlement obstructions, and that's the easiest place to convert the zoning to housing, but there are a lot of situations, and I've even run into this, and you may recall, where there are residentially zoned properties right next to a business complex that would be a perfect multifamily apartment unit, 20 or 30 units, rezoning residential to, you know, to multifamily. And I wonder if this is included, I think it might be included in Number 21, actually, but I just wonder if that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, I think it's really the rezone program where we're going to be looking for those opportunities. This particular one would be if we have any vacant, unused BP office zones, people could, without a use permit, build an apartment, and that would allow us to assume those sites in our inventory, which we can't do right now, because right now you have to come in for a use permit.
But that wouldn't include mixed use, it would just be residential in business?
It could be mixed use, but the intent here would be to assume in our inventory that an apartment could be built. That wouldn't necessarily preclude mixed use.
And somewhere in here, there, I wonder if you can somehow look at the possibility of some ministerial approvals, like they did in Sacramento City, where they're just a fast track, because that project is maybe, it qualifies based on, it's just a really easy project. Are we looking at that, and which number is that?
We are, and we've actually already had to implement state law SB 35, and that was some of what the city was getting at there. So we've already had at least one SB 35 project, and so we have those in place already. So we have looked at a little bit of what the city has done and some of the information comments that came in. I think the other area that we are exploring right now, apartments in the unincorporated county that are more than 150 units trigger a use permit. So one of the things that we are likely to return to the Board is a discussion about doing away with that use permit trigger, whether that goes to a higher trigger or no trigger at all, is a discussion we'll need to have. But that is a barrier to assuming a higher number of sites on some of our sites, and that would be an example of something that the city doesn't have, that kind of use permit trigger.
Okay, and then on Item One, Program One, you were talking about potentially looking at the fees, bringing in a consultant to look at the fee system, and I'm wondering about that. I know, over time, the housing has become even more difficult than ever, and the fee system sort of helps get, keep things moving and potentially, you know, reduce delays. So during a time when we have, we're having a hard time getting housing starts, it seems like changing away from the fee system might discourage housing. And so I hate to see us look at ways that we can change that fee system during a time when housing is already so stressed. So I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I think we, I'm not sure I'm excited about that one, and I don't think that would bode well in helping promote housing starts. And I also wanted to, lastly, bring up Program Eighteen, just cause evictions. In my opinion, to, the better solution would be to look at rental assistance rather than just cause evictions or something like that, because when you start going down that path of limiting property owners' ability to control what happens on their property, they often have responsibilities of their own that they have to meet, and it has a devastating impact on housing. It could, in the end, result in less rental units because it's just too hard. And so, I would rather, rather than just cause evictions, I'd rather see us look at rental housing assistance and/or programs that help renters with rental assistance. So those are, those are my main comments.
Supervisor Nattoli?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. You touched on it a bit when you responded to Supervisor Frost, but on the residential uses in the BP's zones, I heard you say it was kind of a key word, that on vacant sites, so this wouldn't necessarily be conversion of currently office, because again, there's been some, over the years, in looking at that zone and how it, you know, abuts in some cases as single-family, other, maybe even heavier commercial, but it's been largely office and professional services in those zones. Now, maybe we're showing, you know, less utilization because of a changing marketplace or whatever, but I just think we need to, you know, nothing you won't be, but be conscientious in the way we approach this, particularly looking at, you know, areas where they may be developed, and now there's, you know, vacant space and people see the opportunity for housing. I just think recognizing how that zone was introduced and how it interfaced with then-existing or maybe pre-existing or certainly now-existing other residential interfaces there with, or uses that were allowed with sometimes backyard fences that were wood and not of a different construct. I just think we need to be cognizant, and you're well familiar, LeAnn, you've done a lot of work over the years in respect to this.
So I do think that staff was interested probably in also exploring conversions, so it's good to hear that comment. Clearly, we haven't developed this code amendment yet, and the language as written in the program is somewhat flexible. It's not committing the Board one way or another, whether you mean vacant or developed sites. And I understand your concern about developed sites. I don't think we could include, the conversion of developed sites in our inventory, but it may be that staff was looking at making it easier to convert developed sites as well. So it's good to hear that concern, and we can take that in mind as we develop this, assuming this program stays in there.
Okay. I would just note, and again, it was mentioned earlier, but in your response that we currently have the cap on the by right versus the use permit, and there was quite a bit of discussion a few years ago and even in the years before that, as related to, you know, where you draw the line on that as related to projects that require a use permit or some additional level of review. Recognizing here, you're trying to balance, you know, streamlining, getting housing, you know, some of the hurdles to building that housing addressed, but I would just anticipate at least some further discussion, and I would hope, again, in your staff work behind this, as to, you know, maybe comparisons, what's allowed, but if there's no cap, I would say that, you know, there are complexes that have hundreds of units, and they're well-managed and provide, you know, good affordable housing for folks, but there are other, I think, concerns that occurred with complexes that were fairly large that weren't as well-managed in the neighborhood input. And so with the use permit, you can condition some of those things that you might not otherwise, maybe go beyond a development standard. Don't have to be, you know, additional barriers, but I think provide assurances to the approving jurisdiction as well as to residents, both those that would reside there, but also to surrounding land uses and other residents as well, that there are some, some thought has gone into how that site has been laid out beyond just what's in an adopted development code. So I would just add that, having sat here long enough and seen different iterations of that over the years, and recognizing even the last time around, it went from 100 to 150, I think.
I think the other important component that we're also working on is the objective design standards, and so I think that will be important for the Board to see what staff comes out with in terms of objective design standards and whether that gives you any assurance over the quality of the development and at what cap. I think that's a related component to your decision-making.
And I mentioned earlier, just on 15, this missing middle housing, and I know Supervisor Serna weighed in on that. I think, you know, one of the areas that ought to be of consideration there if you're trying to encourage that, and again, it's not necessarily discouraged, and it currently, I mean, maybe in zoning districts, so maybe this would be, you're talking about introducing a duplex into a commercial setting, I don't know, you know, some of those odd interfaces. We have an example in Rosemont where you basically have the back of the shopping center open, you know, faces an alleyway right to the apartments, and we had seen some projects that had those interfaces, but they were largely multifamily, and there aren't too many in number, I don't think. But I guess I would find this interesting, see how you come back to actually encourage it, because I don't know if we discourage it right now, and I think that, you know, what you might build into actually incentivizes this, I guess I'd be curious. Lastly, I would just mention on the tiny houses, in our briefing yesterday, I raised this, that I think that done in a manner that provides, you know, not unlike, and I drew out the comparisons to mobile home parks a generation or two ago, and many of those continue to provide affordable housing, but where you actually do a kind of a master plan site of some sort that has provision certainly of the utility services, but any landscaping, parking, you know, any other amenities might be built in, and then makes provisions for that, but I think it could certainly be streamlined, and we actually have, as I've noted many times, that, you know, some of the parks in the Delta actually allow for tiny house communities, and we've had some folks who have actually marketed in that fashion because of the, you know, the way they're set up down there, and I think they're finding some measure of success in doing that. I haven't seen any new ones in the suburban or urban setting, but I think rather than just the onesie twosies and some of the things we've talked about in previous sessions here, that we've run into issues with existing neighborhoods and how those would be accommodated for service hookups and so forth, to really look at, you know, land, the availability, and what sort of densities could be accommodated in kind of a mobile capacity, but recognizing that level of housing, maybe fit into some of those affordability categories that you addressed in some of your earlier charts. So I'm very interested, I know we've talked about this in the past, and hopefully your work will bring some focus to that.
Yeah.
That's all I have, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost?
I just wanted to go back to Item One and just say, if you don't, you know, if it's not the will of this Board to remove Program One, then I guess my next request would be to give options so that, you know, we're not in a situation where we're changing it up and deterring housing, but, you know, they have options and they can still, if it still works best for them to be able to get things going, the fee system, or they can do something else type of thing, I guess, give options.
Yeah. We have phrased this, we think, fairly open-ended, and I think that was the intent when the Planning Commission added that second sentence or amended the second sentence, which is looking at the economic feasibility, so that if you require too high of a burden, you result in no housing.
Yeah.
Nothing of nothing is.
Right.
Is there a song about that or something?
Exactly. It's a good song.
So, yeah, it'd be looking at both sides, getting more money, but not, not making it so burdensome that you then deter.
Kill the whole thing.
Market rate housing, because then you get nothing, so.
Okay. Does that include the Board's comments? Direction, questions?
Sounds like it does.
It sounds like you got some good feedback today, LeAnn, and we look forward to hearing about the forthcoming progress on this important endeavor. You don't need anything formal from us today, right?
No, we were just looking for your feedback.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, we don't have anyone signed up to speak on this?
Do not have anyone sign to speak for that item.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, before I call out item, the next item for Newbridge, you do have one public comment in there, and I just want to remind the Board that you did close public comments at the last meeting on September 1st, so I'm just asking you, what would you like us to do?
So we have someone on the phone now wants to speak?
Correct.
We're going to go ahead and hear them.
Okay, I'll let staff know. You're waiting for me, huh? Item 44 is the Newbridge specific plan, request for general plan amendments, community plan amendment, zoning ordinance amendments, adoption of the Newbridge specific plan, adoption of the service, services plan, affordable housing strategy acceptance, and a development agreement for properties located at the northwestern corner of Jackson Road and Sunrise Boulevard in the Vineyard Community. The environmental document is an environmental impact report. I'm going to also connect George Phillips Group in, and they'll be on one line, but it won't interrupt the...
Okay. We'll, we'll go ahead and start with staff report then.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Phillips, you're now on the line.
We're gonna go ahead and hear the staff report first, George.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Todd Smith, Principal Planner in the Long Range Master Plan Section. This item was before you on September 1st. I just have a few slides to refresh your memory, and then there are a few comments, I believe Deputy County Executive Mr. Hartwig would like to speak regarding the relinquishment of State Route 16. So just a quick refresher, these are the entitlements that were, are requested for the Newbridge project, general plan amendments, a community plan amendment, and the specific plan itself, including all those items that are listed on the slide. At the prior hearing on September 1st, there was the staff presentation, the applicant's presentation of the project, some more detail was provided. We did receive public testimony and several written comments. The board did close public comment, and staff did request that this item be continued to today to allow us to review those late comments in more detail. We have done so and have had, excuse me, taken a few actions that I'll, I'll show you on the next slide. Again, I want to reiterate relinquishment was one of the major topics of discussion at that prior hearing, and Mr. Hartwig will be speaking to that in just a moment. So since the prior hearing, staff has looked at all those comment letters that came in very late. We did prepare a revised final EIR that's included in your package. It includes those edits to the mitigation measures that are listed here, and just for clarity, those mitigation measures were identified in the memo that we presented to the board on September 1st. Those reflect roughly about five pages in the climate change chapter of the EIR and a couple of pages in the air quality chapter of the EIR. Those have a ripple effect into the SEQA findings of fact, statement of overriding considerations, and into the conditions of approval. So all of those documents have been revised to be consistent with that memo from September Further detail on some of the other unrelated issues to the EIR is provided in the staff And this slide, again, is just the recommended actions for the Newbridge project today. I do want to remind the board that this is a general plan round, so this item, I'm asking that the board delay the vote until the conclusion of the following item, number 45. And that concludes my very short presentation. If you have no questions of me, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hartwig.
Supervisor Tully?
Thank you, Todd. I just wanted to follow on to the environmental document. In the final, there were some changes, and certainly in Chapter 16, a lot of text and certainly study and work went into that traffic and circulation component, but I wanted to ask you about just, and this kind of relates to some of the commentary about impacts on, on Highway 16, organizational discussion about that, but the, on page 16 dash 232, there's a condition that calls out for that this development, Newbridge, and I trust it would probably be applicable to, to others, and I don't know whether this was applicable to Mather South, but it talks about paying a fair share toward the future conversion of HOV lanes to toll lanes or a reversible lane along Highway US 50 from I-5 to Watt Avenue. Does that appear in the environmental documents before?
Yes. So I can briefly answer the question. That mitigation specifically was defined through coordination with Caltrans. When staff and DK asked the traffic consultant, prepared the traffic study, there was a much more lengthy list of transportation for Highway 50. We went back to Caltrans last fall and asked them if this is still applicable, and they came back with a shorter list of cumulative transportation mitigations for Highway 50. That same measure is in Mather South.
Okay. And because that list is strung through, those were, there were specific conditions regarding ramp metering and interchange modifications and so forth and so on, those have all been stricken.
Right.
And then it has this, and then there was also a fair share towards a integrated corridor management system and some more text.
Correct. Caltrans is essentially shifting how they do the cumulative long-term planning for the corridor, Highway 50 corridor.
Okay, all right, thanks. That's all I can add right now, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions for Todd? Yes, we're gonna hear from Mr. Hartwig here shortly.
Great, thank you, Chair Serna. I wasn't sure if there are any other questions for Todd, but with regard to the status of State Route 16, I guess for clarity, what, what probably should have been stated last time on the first was that, what we put on hold was the initiation of the SEQA document that Caltrans would have been preparing. We intend to go ahead and, and get back together with Caltrans staff, review the requirements that the legislature and the CTC put on the, the process of relinquishment that they asked us to include, and then as well as probably meeting with several of the representatives from Amador County. And then we do talk about it in our monthly executive team meetings with the master plan applicants, but we are looking at having a special meeting with them, because there are several different applicant teams that are involved, and we want to have them all hear the same thing. So we're looking at, over the next couple of months, trying to get these meetings scheduled and included with a report back to the board in approximately two months. If, if that's acceptable to the board, that's what we'd like to do, is get back to you with all of those requirements, with what the timeline would be for pursuing the SEQA document and the relinquishment, and then giving you feedback on what impacts the conditions that, that were placed on this might, might have.
Okay. Supervisor Frost?
Steve, I want to ask you on the relinquishment, so as, my understanding, this is before my time, that this is something that came to the board in 2015, and they voted to relinquish, to move forward to relinquish, and then it went to the state legislature, and it was controversial, but they, the state released it and allowed the relinquishment, and now we're in a position of negotiating how that's going to be relinquished with Caltrans, and there, there are other people in that conversation, and without going into the whole thing, there's some, now some question as to if that, if that Highway 16 will, if we intend to relinquish it. And so my impression is that we, the board has already voted on that, and so there is no question as to the relinquishment. It's going to be relinquished. It's a matter of how are we going to negotiate how that goes down, and there are certain specific costs that Caltrans will pay for. That's my understanding, and I'm interested in, in you responding to whether or not you agree, if that's your understanding.
Like you, I've come back to the county after this action was taken. My understanding is that the board authorized that we move forward with pursuing the relinquishment process. The legislature did not authorize relinquishment per se, as in they authorized moving forward with discussions to come up with an agreement for relinquishment that would then be acted upon by CTC and the board and the parties involved. So it's not that, the way I understand it, the relinquishment hasn't been finalized. What it has allowed is for discussion about relinquishment to move forward, and again, as I mentioned, there were certain caveats or conditions that the legislature and the CTC had, had sort of put in there that we needed to accomplish in order to bring something back that they'd be willing to approve. So that's the part of negotiating where, where we are at with that and what would need to be accomplished and, and what things we would need to satisfy is what we're, want to get back together with Caltrans and go over that list a little more carefully to determine what we would have to include in any kind of agreement package that we would have for a relinquishment of the, of the state highway.
So the question I have as it relates to the EIR and, and to the relinquishment is, I know there, there was, everybody was working together on a traffic plan, and it was like, there was a lot of frustration two or three years ago because everyone was held up to work together on a traffic plan around a lot of this, and if for some reason... So a lot of their plan, the, the whole master plan was built around the relinquishment, and there were air quality goals and, you know, there were transportation mitigation and, and air quality mitigation that was tied into that, and so there's concern as to how that impacts those developments, you know, as they, as they unfold, if we don't relinquish, if we don't move forward as soon as possible and relinquish it, then it impacts whether or not they meet these, these EIR mitigation measures. For instance, if there's a big difference between a highway going through, down that corridor and complete streets and trees and sidewalks, and it makes a difference in whether or not they meet their goals, and there could also be concern relating to whether or not the relinquishment could even take place at a future time, because the ways things are going at the state, policy could change whether or not it's even possible. And so it seems like time is of the essence in working toward the relinquishment, and we should be doing that.
Well...
And I guess that's what I'm advocating for, because I think that would be the best outcome for the community, is the relinquishment.
That's where we have some things that we need to look into, because we're not convinced that it is the best strategy for the county, or even for the applicants for that matter, because of the conditions and caveats that have been placed on this, that we have to satisfy certain parties in order to come up with an agreement that would be supported to take it back to the CTC. So that's what we want to report back...
But the board already voted, I thought the board already voted on it. The board already voted to relinquish Highway 16. That was the intention of the board.
I think what Steve's getting at is, we need to go back and continue the conversation with all the different parties and come back and have a discussion with the board to what, what we're finding in these things. So that's what we're saying.
So you're, what you're saying is, we're gonna revisit something that was already divided, decided by a previous board?
No, that's not what I'm saying, that's not what Steve is saying. There are some caveats in that, that we have to satisfy, that we have to go have those conversations, report back to the board what we found out about it. We're not asking for a revisit, just we gotta report back to you on what are the conditions, what's the timeline, how would that work?
Right, Steve. Yes, the board requested that we pursue it. What we would have to bring back to the board is the agreement that would be necessary to make it finalize, and so you would still want to look at that and decide in, in the final action of whether the board felt that was the best approach to these projects. The master plans don't, don't depend on a relinquishment. What they have is a mitigation, transportation mitigation strategy which has certain improvements. Caltrans has a mandate from the governor on down to, to comply with the same complete streets requirements that we do on, on state highways, state routes, such as that. As I mentioned before, relinquishment is the lesser-done approach to being able to do local standards within state rights-of-way through local jurisdictions. Normally, it's worked through the normal Caltrans process. Either way, there's a path for all the master plans to be able to do their mitigation components that they would need to build, whether it be relinquishment and the county processes that, or it's still under state right-of-way, and we, we work through the state with that, and it would likely be county DOT that would be working with the state on those projects as they come up that need to be built within the state Route 16 right-of-way.
I think it's, you know, a common understanding that it would be easier to work directly with the county versus the state or Caltrans, so if we were doing everything we could to promote housing and, you know, get housing starts, then we would try to be moving toward relinquishing it and making that process as simple as possible as we work through these huge projects.
And that's what we want to go, that's what we want to go have that discussion with Caltrans and make sure that we're able to let the board know what conditions might be required as far as an agreement for relinquishment.
So are we, can we, can we know this in the next month or so? Is this something that we can come to, you know, some knowledge of to, you know, where we're at?
Next couple of months, that's what we plan on doing, is talking to Caltrans, ACTC, everybody that's a party to this, come back to the board and have that discussion.
And is there any, you know, is, is there any reason why, I mean, I, I support Newbridge, so I, I don't have any problems with Newbridge, but is there any reason why, you know, letting these projects move forward is going to in any way free them of responsibility associated with that, the cost implications from Highway 16?
I don't think so. I think the, the mitigation strategy is independent of relinquishment, as Steve mentioned, and I'll elaborate a little bit more.
Well, how can it be independent if it impacts their, how their, their air quality commitments and all that?
It, it really doesn't impact air quality commitments. So the analysis that, in each EIR through the joint traffic study that was developed with all four projects participating, excuse me, was conducted in a manner such that all the impacts were identified and appropriate mitigation was identified regardless of relinquishment. It identified the necessary improvements within the entire study area, including on State Route 16. The mitigation strategy goes into the details of how those improvements occur over time with each development increment. The data from that study goes into the air quality analysis and drives the mitigation related to air quality and climate change. The county has absolute control to enforce those mitigation measures, and we do that through the mitigation monitoring reporting program. As each subsequent development project, maybe a tentative map, maybe a rezone, comes through the process, we verify that those mitigation measures are being satisfied.
Okay, yield for now. Thank you.
Supervisor Tully?
Yeah. Just to follow on, and I guess I kind of see two, two segments of this, and I think the last one you just addressed, and that is the transportation management strategy. I want to go first to just the relinquishment process, and I think it's, it's accurate, it's certainly portrayed, this board initiated and certainly approved the seeking legislation that resulted obviously in a bill that authorized the Transportation Commission to consider the relinquishment, but obviously with, as Mr. Gill said, a number of conditions. I am, I do want to note though, and I think this is an important piece of information, Mr. Hartwig spoke to coming back, I think it's probably better to come back sooner. We certainly have a pending action, of course, today with Newbridge, and well, the board will take that up as we go through this hearing. But when I look at the draft report that was done by Caltrans, and they had a discussion about project initiation, it was shared with, I assume it was shared with us, with the county back in, a summer ago, in July of 2019, and it does talk about responsibility for preparation of environmental documents and such, and there may have been some refinement that occurred in conversations because obviously of other parties' interest in, in the relinquishment, not, not just the applicants here in this county, but obviously folks in Amador County. But I, I want to point out that if, if this is accurate in the letter that was in response to, and it was, this was circulated to, to the board as an attachment to, letter came from one of the parties that has registered concerns, the Amador County Transportation Commission and their legal representatives, but the letter's from Caltrans, and it's dated December of last year, and it really says that the county's in the driver's seat. It says, November, Caltrans received the enclosed letter, which was referenced in the last hearing, which we basically, under Mr. Carr's signature, asked to put this on hold, but it says that the county of Sacramento, this is turned by the director of Caltrans for this district, requested that the relinquisher process be suspended, a little different word, but I guess same meaning as far as putting it on hold. but I guess same meaning as far as putting it on hold. It says Caltrans will not be requesting any actions from the California Transportation Commission unless or slash until county of Sacramento requests resumption of the relinquishment process. So they've put us in the driver's seat on this and I think this board, having over the past nearly eight years now, taking this matter up at different junctures and staff obviously presented in public session, had meetings with interested parties, development, obviously proponents have, you know, paid for studies that took into account transportation, different scenarios and so forth. And so I think it's really important that, as Mr. Gill, Mr. Hartwig have said here, that we get this sorted out, that we understand what responsibilities might fall to the county under the relinquisher process, either pre some agreement and/or a post agreement, because I find interesting, and I won't go into all the detail here, it's certainly it's available to all of us and it's in the public domain, but in Caltrans and their preliminary or their draft initiation discussion, I just want to point this out because they say that even though local agencies might be responsible to complete certain studies, referencing historical and cultural studies, that Caltrans costs for oversight might even be higher than estimated for completing the work and they built into a budget of a million dollars to process encroachment permits before relinquishment because cultural studies mitigation would have to be completed, in their words, draft report piecemeal in the future and the process would not be as efficient as completing it all now. And that's relinquishing, it has nothing to do with Newbridge per se. So I think it's important, Steve, again, you know, you've been on board here now for just about a year, that for the purposes of this particular item, it's relevant obviously to transportation corridor, what it means to this county, what it means to Caltrans, costs associated with preparing studies that could get this actually teed up for actually an agreement. I think we need to have that back to us soon. I mean, I think it came as a bit of a surprise to folks that the county had put this on hold via, obviously, staff that I assume was authorized to do that, that was never shared with this board until, well, it was, it became public knowledge when we had Supervisor Frost and I, and she led the town hall meeting, but we were participating and it was shared by staff that, you know, a year ago or 10 months ago, we put this on hold. And so I think it raised concern and whether, you know, they're founded or not, I think there needs to be discussion back at this board. We were the ones through public hearing process that initiated it. We asked our elected representatives to go to bat for us, they did that. And it may be that at some juncture, now or in the future, that the feasibility becomes a bigger question mark than what was thought initially, but that should have probably come back to this board in some other context. But B is, I mean, we're sitting here October the 6th, I just think that you can get back to it sooner and recognize you've got to do some outreach and I would, I guess I'd ask now that if there's a possibility, again, working with your chair and with, you know, Steve and the other parties, maybe get this back to, say, pre Thanksgiving, maybe November 17th meeting if possible.
We will give it a shot as long as we can get all the meetings.
I would just also point out, Don, that if you look at two months out, that puts us dangerously close to having this skitten punted into 2021 because of our recess, which will start in earnest on the 19th of December. And two months from today is, you know, the 7th of December. So I'm with you. I think if we can get this back before this board, before, close to Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving break, that's not unreasonable.
Yep, we will.
Supervisor Frost?
I completely agree and I also want to say that there's a lot happening in California right now. I know Caltrans is talking about added cost, but if there's additional studies or added costs, I think it's important to bring all parties into that conversation, you know, if, I know the county, we're struggling, you know, with COVID and finances and everything else and this is something that it's possible that, you know, the developers can help out with some of those, if we include them in the conversation, you know, I think the opportunity of having the traffic calming and, you know, the expedited, you know, processing, you know, through the county is enough of an incentive to them to possibly participate. I don't know, I'm not suggest, I'm just saying, we should be keeping them in the communication loop somehow because they are under, they were under a certain, they had a certain understanding and it wasn't communicated in any other way to them. So I guess I'm asking if we can keep them in it.
As I mentioned Supervisor Frost, we now have monthly meetings with each applicant team so that we can keep them informed on these. It's kind of the change in the model approach to getting these projects completed that we've gone through in just the last handful of months to get kind of a little bit newer model on how we're trying to get these delivered and how we're trying to get the critical path tasks done and solved and then move to the next ones. And so we will keep them informed via those monthly meetings, but also we're going to set up a special one with at least two of the applicant teams that have asked for a meeting and we're going to talk to them at the same time so that everybody hears the same thing.
Yeah, that's good because, you know, a comparison to that is COVID, you know, when we started having those public health come in at each meeting, it seems like the communications are going really well and things have calmed down. And I think having all parties in the same room, at least to be on the same page at times is a good thing. So thanks for doing that.
And before we go to Supervisor Tully, let me just put a finer point on what I said earlier. November 17th is our second meeting scheduled for November. The first one is on Election Day, the 3rd, and I think we'd all agree we probably want to have a light agenda on that day, maybe even just a morning session. So I think that ought to be a date that we shoot for. Supervisor Tully?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. And so I just wanted to bring it back to, I think, the Newbridge project, which is before us today, and I think Todd was addressed it in, to some Supervisor Frost questions earlier. And this goes certainly with the written staff report and even some of the comments that have come through as recently as today in response to a letter that was received yesterday, that, you know, there was a tremendous amount of time and costs associated with both the circulation and transportation studies that went into the IR, all the consultant activities and the inputs from the various project proponents. And there is a mitigation strategy that is going to be employed. It does assign fair share costs. It does also have factors built into for recognizing that these projects could be, you know, many years in their build out. And so that the master plan have public facility financing plan, which is before us today, and it includes, again, as I said, those fair share components. I guess I would just ask Todd if you or Steve want to add anything else because again, I think there is a distinction here, is, you know, as we talk about the relinquishment and its importance in the scheme of things, but that each project, as it comes forward, will have certain obligations as part of those development agreements and the assignments of, I guess, relative contributions to the traffic impacts as well as obviously mitigations. And the strategy allows some flexibility, but also, you know, has some components for fair share contribution. So maybe you could just take a moment because I think it's important because I know this has been a focus of all the communication received and I think it's really at the heart of a lot of what we're talking about here today. And I don't know, obviously counsel they want to weigh into, but some of the letters have come from lawyers on behalf of other parties too.
Sure, so I'll start with the mitigation strategy. That was approved by the board in July, I think, of last year. It includes not only a fair share contribution, but also a construction obligation. That's an important factor for delivering the facilities that are necessary in the communities. And that's based on a fair share calculation, certainly not the traffic engineer, so please don't press too hard, based on a fair share calculation of each project's contribution to that cumulative model. And so as each development increment proceeds, you know, whether a map comes in or a larger piece of development, there will be an analysis done, a smaller scale analysis, used what's called a dynamic tool, that spits out a result of where that project is located relative to other development in the corridor or the area and identifies what that project's responsibility is, whether it's building something or contributing a fair share. That same approach is applied equally and equitably to all four of these projects. Obviously, some may have a larger responsibility because of their size and scale than others, but it's all based on their fair share. That's the transportation mitigation strategy in a very high level overview. Each project's financing plan does include their fair share costs. For Newbridge, it's in the neighborhood of $63 million for regional roadways. That doesn't get into the local onsite roads and other infrastructure. The urban services plan in each project is going to identify how the ongoing maintenance and operations are funded long-term. We're trying to take a consistent approach on all of these in that regard. The, for Newbridge, the affordable housing strategy, picking up on the previous item. Newbridge is dedicating onsite land, 10 acres, 220 units, consistent with the affordable housing ordinance and the assumption is that the balance of the project, the non-participating properties will pay the affordable housing fee. That's the balance that we're trying to achieve in coordination with SHRA such that the units are there in place prior to a certain threshold of development such that there's no local opposition down the road. As it relates to development agreements, we are striving to have a development agreement with each of these projects. We anticipate similar commitments by the county and the applicant for each one. I think you've seen two of them so far, so I don't think that's anything new. We have tried to take a uniform approach relative to the conditions of approval, the mitigation measures where we can, and trying to have a uniform structure and applicability. In some cases, there may be some unique aspects of individual projects that warrant a specialized approach and we call those out where we need to. That's the sum of it.
And I guess just one final question then, is the, because this particular applicant is seeking the specific plan, general plan amendment, but not zoning entitlements or large lot maps or, you know, that level of detail, is there any distinguishing factor between conditions because of the level of entitlement, whereas Mather South zoning on theirs? Is there any distinction relative to the condition or triggers or applicability? Again, the conditions are, I assume, consistent down through the theme and it would be applicable if future entitlements were.
So at this time, what we have with, I'll just use the two that have come before you, Mather South and Newbridge, their conditions, the strategy is, and when I say strategy, I'm talking about how they're structured, not the mitigation strategy. The structure of the two sets of conditions for each project are virtually the same in terms of the agency, what's required of the applicants. We also have a subsequent attachment, I think in this package is attachment three, that is advisory conditions that we can't necessarily get into the detail of because they get to finer level of detail like maps and subdivision layouts, but we want to put those on as advisory based on what the current regulations are from the various entities, sewer district, the water purveyors, et cetera, so that there's an expectation for those future entitlements when they come in. We're starting with this as a baseline of the regulatory framework. So we're trying to do that for each one of these projects and Newbridge is, you're correct, is only going for a specific plan and a community plan amendment right now. Subsequent entitlements would be a rezone and maps.
And you have 56 advisory conditions and then there's attachment 11, which includes all the Department of Transportation, but those are all then carried forward?
Correct.
To the future consideration?
We tried to make a comprehensive package, so it's all in one place for the future.
Okay, all right. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thanks.
Supervisor Frost?
Sorry for my ignorance, but I'm going to just ask you, is there any possible chance that those who go through the window first and build completely out and Highway 16 isn't relinquished, they build out and they don't incur their fair share because they're already done and someone else at the end who comes later ends up bearing the cost of the entire relinquishment and improvements on Highway 16?
I don't believe that to be the case. I will.
No, they'll either have, they'll either trigger the requirement to build those improvements or they'll have to put in their fair share amounts and likely those would become county projects that we would do with the fair share dollar amounts that have been contributed by the earlier developments.
And where is that? Is that in the development agreement?
That's, that's in the mitigation strategy. It tells where the triggers are and when they would have to do certain improvements to stay current with the development that's ongoing.
Okay. I just have two other questions. The first one's relating to some of the public comments on the SEQA and I know we closed the public hearing in our last meeting and there were some comments relating to a lot of new information relating to air quality mitigation that, and it should have triggered another public process. I wanted to know if you could please comment on the changes in the EIR relating to air quality.
Sure. And I'll touch both on air quality and climate change because those two chapters.
And that was my next one. I wanted you to explain the cap and how does that impact, who does that impact specifically?
I'll start with the first part and then go to the second part.
Thank you.
So for the air quality and climate change chapters of the EIR, in both the final EIR and the revised final EIR, we did make a fair amount of edits in response to the comments that were received on the draft. That's part of the SEQA process. We incorporate any necessary edits based on those comments. We also added, in the passage of time since the draft EIR for Newbridge was published in July 2018, and when we published the final EIR, the Metropolitan Air Quality Management District had adopted thresholds of significance for greenhouse gases. We included a comparison of the project to those thresholds of significance for information purposes, that we didn't use them to derive the county's, excuse me, the county's impact conclusions, but we thought it would be useful information to provide to the public and to the decision makers so that everyone is fully informed. So when it comes to the question of recirculation of the EIR, there are some SEQA guidelines that are applicable here and it specifically states that significant new information, in quotes, is dealing with when there's a substantial adverse environmental impact that was not previously disclosed, or there is, excuse me, a substantial increase in the severity of an impact, or there's some new mitigation that the applicants decline to implement or adopt. That's not the case here. All the information that was added simply amplifies or clarifies what was already in the draft EIR. And then there's additional information that was not even required, but we did it out of an abundance of caution for disclosure purposes. So we don't believe recirculation is required. If we did, we would not be here.
Who determines substantial? What is, how do you determine, how do you rationalize what is substantial?
Eventually, it will be determined through if an opponent chooses to litigate, the judge will decide that. But in the county's expertise over the last few decades, these revisions do not rise to the level of significant new information based on our experience over the last few decades. It doesn't change the conclusions of the EIR, it doesn't change the mitigation. The only minor changes to the mitigation were actually incorporated voluntarily by the applicant.
Was there any new information since the public hearing or was this a compilation of information that had been discussed in the public hearing or prior in the public process?
Sure. So it was both of those. Nothing new, it was.
Nothing new since then?
Correct. So we took those comments that came in late and looked at them, said, all right, here are a few minor tweaks in the revised final EIR, just clarifying a couple of errors that we.
Comments that came in during the public hearing?
Yes, and the preceding days. And then the major edits, I'm calling them major, which they're not really, there are only five pages in the climate change chapter and a couple of pages in the air quality chapter that were edited consistent with that memo September 1st regarding revised mitigation.
Okay, and then lastly on the cap, will later developments be subject to the cap requirements where earlier ones weren't or who's impacted by the Climate Action Plan?
With respect to this project, the mitigation measure, I think it's CC3, in addition to mitigation measures, CC1, CC2, A and B, CC3 requires that they participate in the Climate Action Plan when it is adopted. So that affects future development in Newbridge eventually, which is not the subject of today's hearing. Eventually, which is not the subject of today's hearing, but when the cap is adopted, it will affect all new development in Sacramento County.
That's not what I was, that's not what I understood, or what I was, felt like I was told previously. I felt like I was told that the Climate Action Plan would be impacting only the unincorporated county and that developments would have a choice as to whether or not they wanted to utilize the requirements of the plan or just go by their specific EIRs, or, I mean, mitigation requirements.
Sure, so let me clarify. Unincorporated county, not the cities as well, I'm not speaking about what the cities are doing. So the unincorporated county is where the Climate Action Plan would apply. The projects are still obligated to, at least the ones that have been approved to date, still obligated to fulfill their other mitigation, CC1, CC2 in this case, and then anything above and beyond that's in the cap that they need to implement, which may be perhaps beneficial to them and to the county, then they would be on the hook for that too.
I'm a little confused because I was under the impression if they wanted to utilize the cap, they could, but they don't have to.
So just to clarify, Alian Moffett again, they have their own standalone mitigation measures, so they, like, for example, if the cap were not adopted, they are whole unto themselves. If the cap is adopted and there is something that they wish to avail themselves of or is more rigorous, then they've agreed either way to participate in that. But if the board were, for example, to not adopt a cap, they have their own standalone mitigation.
Or vice versa, if it happens that the cap that we adopt for unincorporated is not as stringent as a cap that they've agreed to...
Then they can go by the less stringent if it benefits them if they want.
Correct.
That's different, okay. I get it. Sorry, I misunderstood what you were saying. I wanted to clarify it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, I want to check in with Mr. Phillips, who's been on the phone. My understanding is he's still on the phone, right?
Yeah.
To see if he wanted to offer any brief comments.
Todd mentioned we are required via CC3 to comply with the cap and to demonstrate that our air quality mitigation is equal to or better than what is in the cap, but we are obligated to comply with the cap. We don't, we can't opt out of it. We are subject to the cap voluntarily, we're agreeing to that, and to make sure that any mitigation measures that we would implement to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions are equal to or greater than those included in the cap. And we have a, we have a performance standard that we must meet in terms of reducing greenhouse gases that will either be, that will be complied with via the cap or equal equivalent measures.
Is there any chance that the cap can be more strict than their requirements in their specific projects?
Yes, the cap could be more restrictive and require additional mitigation that is in our individual mitigation measures, and again, we would have to comply with that and demonstrate that we're making reductions equal to or greater than what is in the cap.
So in theory, those people who come later could potentially have a higher requirement than those who go through the window first?
Not if they're also complying with the cap, as will we. The only, there's been one master plan in front of us, they have a different, or before us, came before us, they have a different mitigation measure relative to this particular issue, but we have agreed to comply with the cap. It is in the mitigation monitoring program, it is an obligation of this project. We are not getting out of the cap. And those projects that come subsequent and would follow the adoption of the cap, they too will be subject to mitigate in compliance with the cap.
You'll recall Supervisor Frost, that when we had the Mather South hearings, I and others made some pretty clear, I think, clear comments about there being an equal playing field for these various large master plan development proposals, that we were going to see, you know, a long, long line of succession of them in the short period, including Newbridge, and that my concern at that time was that because the cap had not been completed, are we going to find ourselves in a quandary when, you know, half of the projects are respecting the cap, are acknowledging the cap, are willing to voluntarily agree to any kind of mitigation associated with the cap, while others aren't because of the timing of the cap versus when we're considering these various development entitlements? So I think that's what Mr. Phillips is communicating, is that Newbridge voluntarily agreed, as I will go out on a limb and say others will also do, to, again, acknowledge the cap and be compliant with it.
Mather South also?
That came up at the last time, the last time we talked about progress on the cap, that did come up. But that would have to be voluntary, is my understanding.
Correct, that will be voluntary on their part.
Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Tully?
Do you have any other callers or any other comments then?
One.
One more caller?
You have one.
Okay. Before we leave, Mr. Phillips, George, was that, was that, did that constitute the conclusion of your comments?
It does, Mr. Chairman. I mean, obviously, we're happy to be here today and hoping that the board will take action in approving the project. We believe that the review by staff of the responses to the comments that have been received, both in your staff report and in correspondence that we've submitted adequately addresses those issues, and we feel that you have a complete package before you today and able to take action if the board so chooses. So we appreciate your consideration.
All right, thank you very much. Any other calls?
Hi caller, go ahead and start your comments, please.
My name is Olivia Clark. I'm calling on behalf of the Amador County Transportation Commission.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Good evening, my name is Olivia Clark. I'm calling on behalf of the Amador County Transportation Commission. Our comments this evening are in four principal areas. First, the findings are inadequate because they are conclusory and not supported by any facts or details. An example, there are statements in the EIR like "the project is consistent with the general plan" or "complies with the general plan policies" but with no elaboration. Second, in actuality, this project does not comply with general plan policies, specifically CI 27, 30, 39, 40, and 42. By that, we mean necessary rights of ways were not obtained. The EIR concludes that traffic impacts are significant, unavoidable, because they are financially infestable, and at no point has the county ever collaborated with ACTC as articulated in CI 42. Third, as we've explained in our multiple comment letters, the traffic measures are inadequate. TC1, addressing impacts to the Jackson Corridor, does not demonstrate how it will actually lessen or reduce impacts to State Route 16. Moreover, under Section 18 of the Jackson Corridor Transportation Mitigation Strategy, project applicants are permitted an opportunity to appeal determinations made by Caltrans staff regarding application of this strategy to its project, and the Board of Supervisors' decision is considered final and conclusive. In other words, in one fell swoop, any necessary mitigation measure can simply be undone. Fourth and finally, applicants in Attachment 23 take the preposterous position that the county is neither required to measure traffic impacts against LOS or VMT. Nothing in SEQA supports that statement. While the applicant could have relied on LOS, since the EIR was prepared prior to July 2020, and while VMT is the new model after July 2020, the applicant cannot simply evade review and misstate the holding in the City of Sacramento case out of the Third District Court of Appeal. In short, we ask that the EIR contain proper analysis, be recirculated and updated, and provide meaningful mitigation measures. We comment that the LOS and VMT analysis is in violation of SEQA and not in compliance with the county's own general plan policies.
Could I ask a question, the caller?
Thank you.
Sure. I think we have a question for the caller.
Yeah. Ms. Clark, this is Supervisor Natoli. I just, I wanted to make sure I understood your point number three, that you said in "one fell swoop" that any of the conditions that were put in place, at least your assertion is, is that those could be undone? So could you just explain, I wasn't clear on how you got there to your conclusion, if you could just take a moment, please.
I think she's listening.
She's listening to the three-minute delay.
I'm sorry, I feel I should apologize first. There's a small lag between the county's online feed and my phone delivery, but I think you're asking about our third point.
Yes.
That the Board of Supervisors has the authority to overcome any determination made by Caltrans in accordance with the transportation, sorry, the traffic measure. Is that correct?
Yeah, I was asking about your third point, so yeah, I just, how you concluded that it could all be undone.
The statement we're trying to make is that Section 18 provides project applicants are permitted an opportunity to appeal any determination made by Caltrans staff regarding application of the traffic measure strategy under the Jackson Corridor Transportation Mitigation Strategy, and that appeal can go to the Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors' decision is then considered final and conclusive, which essentially by our reading allows a mechanism for a project applicant to completely sidestep this sort of requirement.
Okay. Thank you for your explanation. I guess I may just ask our staff if they could respond to that. I mean, that's not my understanding, when we put conditions in place and somehow they can be overturned.
That is not staff's understanding either. When the board adopts conditions of approval, they stay until the board may choose to amend in the future.
June, did you want to weigh in from, since we have a...
So in response to that last comment, first of all, I just want to make clear for the record that the public hearing on this matter has already been closed. It was closed after the last hearing. As to the comments specifically, we do have a letter that is included with your packet for today from Remy Moose Manley, and it actually addresses many of the issues that were raised. Those issues were also addressed in an interdepartmental memo that is dated today. At this point, the county believes that what you have before you for the EIR is sufficient. Again, EIRs are not meant to be perfect. We should not expect that comments would not come as a result of draft EIRs. In fact, that is the purpose of a draft EIR. It is to elicit comments, and commenters have differing opinions and differing perspectives. It is clear from the many communications that we've received from ACTC and their counsel that there is a difference of opinion, that they have relied on even different methodologies, and that is perfectly acceptable. But their reliance on any other methodology does not negate or undermine the county's reliance on the methodologies that it selected. Similarly, the county has prepared a final EIR, it has mitigation measures, it has enforcement for those things, there are parameters put in place, built into it, such that it is legally sufficient in our opinion despite the concerns raised by ACTC, and I would again assert that these concerns are not new, they were previously raised, and they have been addressed in the documents that I referenced and in some of the previous letters from Remy Moose, which the county agrees with.
Just to clarify, so were you including this as a part of the actionable record then, the response? Is that what I take what you just said?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because I saw the staff one, and obviously Remy Moose was on the last call on behalf of the applicant and has responded. But just to the point about forcibility of conditions, nothing's different here than in other projects that we have before this board, big or small, where conditions, if they're properly vetted and put forth into the action by the board that's been reviewed, obviously by legal counsel, by review of our staff, those are enforced and effective, is that correct?
Correct. The planning department has, it's my understanding, attempted to create consistency amongst these projects, and so no, there is not anything new or different or unique.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you. And the calls are done, correct? Okay. All right. So at this point, if there's no further board discussion, I entertain a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, before you entertain a motion, we have the subsequent item...
Oh, we've got to do that together?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
General plan round. Unfortunately.
All right.
All right, so I am still...
Let me read that item into the record just one second. Okay, Item 45 is the General Plan Amendment to Establish Vehicle Miles Traveled Thresholds of Significance for California Environmental Quality Act Analysis. This is, the environmental determination is exempt.
Okay, so just before you get started, Todd, then the motion has to incorporate action on this as well as the recommended actions for the previous item, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right.
So this item, as has been announced, is a general plan amendment to incorporate VMT, vehicle miles traveled, as SEQA significance thresholds for Sacramento County. These would be incorporated into the general plan, and this is an amendment to the circulation element is where this would be housed. So this is really building on legislation from 2013, SB 743, which essentially states that vehicular delay and level of service are no longer the performance metrics to be used in environmental analysis for SEQA purposes. And even though the state doesn't say or dictate what metrics should be used necessarily, there is a recommendation that vehicle miles traveled or VMT be used by jurisdictions, and many jurisdictions across the state have done that. Level of service standards are already in the general plan and will continue to be used by our Department of Transportation, just not in the SEQA context. So Policy CI 5 is where this will live in the circulation element. The text in bold is what's being added. We already had VMT in there, but it just refers to this table that's going to be inserted, Table CI 1, and goes through the process where the VMT level standards that are specified in the table are predicted to be exceeded, then we apply all feasible mitigation. That's a typical SEQA process. This is the table itself, Table CI 1. I'm not going to read the whole thing at all, but generally, what this is breaking down is the different land use types on the left side and the significance criteria on the right. You'll see in a couple of these, the first two in particular, where we're calling out number 85% of the regional average VMT. This is what OPR recommends in its technical guidance. They phrase it as 15% below the regional average. We're phrasing it as 85% of. It's the same thing. So staff recommendations, pretty simple here. We're going to recognize the exempt status of the request under SEQA and then adopt the general plan resolution.
Okay, very good, thank you. Did that complete your...
That concludes my presentation, yes.
Okay. And there's no one signed up to speak on this item, Madam Clerk?
No.
Okay. Any questions from the board on this item? Supervisor Frost?
I'm sick of hearing from me. This is hopefully quick. I received some question, and I think you might already be working with some folks regarding the VMT and our approach to dealing with the new VMT standard and how the developers are being asked to develop a new, do a VMT analysis as part of SEQA, and then I guess they're having to do it as part of the service analysis and SEQA, at two different levels. to do it as part of the service analysis and SEQA, at two different levels. They're having to duplicate efforts. And they were, is there a way to simplify that so that, I think you're already working with them on that?
We are. So not just planning and environmental review staff, but our DOT counterparts, we have conversations like this all the time. As we're implementing this new state regulation, it creates another level of analysis or a different level of analysis that has been previously done. We're trying to figure out ways where we can use simple tools rather than a complex modeling effort. Obviously, for larger projects, the modeling is important. But for smaller projects, we're trying to figure out how we can not have to go through an expensive, time-consuming process on a project-by-project basis. So we are actively working to address that concern.
Thank you.
Okay. So no further questions. Now I'd entertain a motion.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chair. With that, then, I would, for the general plan round, move the Items 44 and Items 45. Item 44 would include the, including certification of the revised final environmental document, is that in finding adequate and complete, adopt the revised SEQA findings effect and statement of overriding considerations, approve the list of the requested items, including general plan amendments, community plan amendments, specific plan for New Bridge, development standards, design guidelines, the public facilities finance plan, the USP Development Agreement, the affordable housing strategy, the Zone 40 Water Supply Master Plan, the water supply assessment, and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. That would be for Item 44, New Bridge. And then under Item 45, recognize the exempt status of the request as related to the calculations for vehicle miles traveled and the level of service, and adopt a resolution recommending the board approve the amendments to the general plan, subject to the findings.
Give us a second. Any further discussion? Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd, for your work and leadership, Alian.
Very thorough.
You're welcome.
All right. We have our own ranks?
Yes, you do. And that's Item 46, appointments from your own ranks to the California State Association of Counties, Board of Directors, and the Urban Counties Caucus.
Can we, can we just continue to have Supervisor Peters?
Supervisor Peters would decline that nomination.
Don't want to volunteer after January 1st to do it? No?
Okay, well, table's open for nominations here.
Ms. Frost, are you interested? CSAC?
Yes.
Phil, do you want to remain the alternate, or did you want to bump up, or do you want...
No, I'll stay, I'll stay, stay in alternate.
So you're going to be Naco and she'll be CSAC?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll vote yes on that. Second nomination.
So are we doing the, because you do have your member and alternate seats. So can you tell me what the recommendation is?
Supervisor Frost will be the regular member at CSAC. I'll continue as the alternate.
Phil, Serna will remain as alternate.
Got it. Thank you.
What is that?
And who made the motion? Sorry. Mr. Natoli, and who seconded?
Ms. Peters.
Thank you. Okay.
There's a small dog in here somewhere.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
No, it's just...
All right. I was halfway, halfway tempted to nominate Patrick in his absence just to teach him a lesson.
We've done that before, haven't we?
I have no comments.
Delish.
All right. Does that include our business there?
Yes, but you do have your supervisor comments.
That we do. You won't have any comments?
I have two adjournments.
Oh, okay. Can I...
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to go ahead?
Yeah.
I have two adjournments today. First, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Dr. Denny Ozbach. Last month, cancer took the life of Dr. Ozbach, considered by many to be the founding father of the California State Railroad Museum. He's credited with getting Governor Ronald Reagan's support for the museum after hosting a dinner forum on the Gold Coast Express Railroad Dining Car in 1970. He was also instrumental in securing the Governor Stanford locomotive, the first locomotive of the Central Pacific Railroad Company, which accomplished the monumental feat of linking the two coasts by the Transcontinental Railroad. That locomotive is on display at the railroad museum. Dr. Ozbach was born in Chicago and developed an early fascination with railroad trains. He graduated from Stanford Medical School and practiced as a radiologist, including serving as the chief of radiology at Sutter General Hospital. And for 50 years, he lived in Arden Park. The railroad museum has a world-renowned reputation as a first-class museum, thanks to the efforts of many local locomotive enthusiasts like Dr. Ozbach. And in 2014, the National Railroad and Locomotive Historical Society honored him for his contributions in preserving railroad history. He served on the Railroad Museum Foundation's Board of Directors and continued to remain active up until his death. He was also the founding president of the Sacramento Trust for Historic Preservation. Sacramento County's history is deeply intertwined with railroad history. It's only fitting that the Board of Supervisors adjourn today in the memory of Dr. Denny Ozbach in recognition of his contributions in preserving that history. My second adjournment is in memory of Alta Mae Davis. The North Highlands community lost an active volunteer with the recent passing of Alta Mae Davis. She and her husband, George, were regular attendees at the monthly lunch bunch activities, gatherings in North Highlands, where community volunteers and activists would meet for lunch and share information about activities occurring in the neighborhood. Specifically, you could always see her and George sitting in the third booth next to the mirrored wall at the Pancake Palace on Wad Avenue, which has always served as a lunch bunch official meeting spot. I remember seeing her there many times. I had the occasion of, yes, so Mrs. Davis was active in the Madison Avenue Baptist Church in North Highlands. She was also involved in her neighborhood watch and, of course, the lunch bunch. She survived by her husband and 56 years, George, and their three daughters and four grandchildren. Alta Mae Davis represented the best of community spirit in North Highlands, where neighbors care about the community, and it's only fitting the board adjourn today in her memory. Thank you.
Great. If there's no further business before this board, we will adjourn in memory this afternoon of Dr. Denny Ozbach and Alta Mae Davis.